Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, February 25, 2004. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is just after 10:15 a.m. and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum, before beginning with the official meeting of today. We do have one special presentation. Let me recognize Councilmember Smith for an introduction.
Today, we have with us a group of students from the Haskell School Elementary School. All of you stand up, say hello, stand up. This is a fifth grade from Haskell Elementary School. And this year, I understand they're studying government and they've elected officials from the government and everything, so that we welcome to City Hall. I hope you enjoy your tour today and see what goes on at the city level. And unlike the state of California, we've got things pretty well under control here, so enjoy your tour today. Thank you for coming down and I hope you have a great day here at City Hall. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Members, we're still one shy of a quorum. Do we have any other introductions or presentations this morning before we can officially get started? If not, then bear with us here as we expect a number of members to arrive any moment. Ms. Perry for a special introduction.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I know that Ms. Gruhl would like to speak on this item regarding Judge Pragerson. Let's see, I know he's here somewhere. If Judge Pragerson could... Okay, where is he? Oh, Judge Pragerson. Come on, come on up here and at least sit in the front row. Wendy Gruhl and I thought that it would be best that we just speak about this item now so that you didn't have to wait all day, since you are such an important person, not only a Ninth Circuit Judge, but what's more important to me is the tremendous amount of work and energy and zeal and love and compassion that you have shown to the homeless community and working to make sure that homeless people are given the resources and opportunities that the rest of us have. And I want to say personally how much I appreciate that, which is why I was so pleased to name the intersection of Hill and First Street, or make the motion to name the intersection of Hill and First Street after you as Judge Harry Pragerson Square. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Perry. Actually, members, we have a quorum now. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas Garcetti, Grohan Labange, Ledlow Miskowski Parks, Perry Reyes, Smith Vierigosa, Vice-Sign Padilla, ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session and I see Ms. Gruhl, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Labange have pressed their buttons. What I'd like to do is ask for you to keep your comments until the time where the actual agenda item comes up. Okay, of course. Never say no to a judge. But councilmembers' comments, if you could hold them until we actually take the agenda item up, which will be in a few minutes.
I want to thank the City Council for this honor and I want to thank Councilwoman Perry for moving that the corner of First and Hill be designated as Harry Pragerson Square. I just have one question, and that is this: if things get tough and I've got to go back on a corner selling newspapers, do I have to have a permit to sell papers on First and Hill?
It'll be revocable.
What?
It'll be revocable.
Be revocable? Well, there goes a big portion of my income. But I just want to say this: I was born in this city. I'm 80 years old, lived here all my life except for time in the service and time away in Berkeley for law school. I love this city. I'm a product of this city. I'm a product of the L.A. Unified School District and I'm proud of that. I think that this City Hall was built, I'm not positive, the same year that I was born, which was 19...
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven? I thought it was 23. Well, whatever.
When was it built? The building?
When did they lay the cornerstone?
Twenty-eight.
Well, I'm older than this building then, you know. And so I'd like to thank the council and I want to introduce two members of my family. Come up here, Bradley. I mean, Dave. Come on. Sharon. This is my grandson, David Pragerson. He's going to be another Steven Spielberg. He's a fourth-generation Los Angeles native. Did you know that, Dave?
No.
Well, you found out right now. And also, my daughter-in-law, Sharon Pragerson, who works very, very actively in childcare centers and in the homeless project that we have for families. So I want to thank Cindy and I want to thank them for coming down here. All right?
Thank you, Judge. There's a few of us that want to say something about you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, what we'll do, colleagues, now is, you know what? Let's just go ahead and transition to item number 30. The clerk will read the item, please.
Item number 30 is Perry Vierigosa motion designating the Harry Pragerson Square at First and Hill.
Okay, and Ms. Gruhl wishes to speak, followed by Mr. Reyes and Mr. Labange?
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. And thank you for letting us go out of order. It's not often that we have a Ninth Circuit Judge here in our council chambers and I want to thank Ms. Perry for making this motion to designate this square for Harry Pragerson. Harry Pragerson has been someone who has had a tremendous influence on the city, on the state, and in this country. There is a childcare center that is named after him, and that's just one of the many childcare centers that he helped ensure that we worked with General Services and the federal government to set up while I worked for Mayor Bradley. He also has been a strong advocate on the issue of homelessness. And if you haven't been to the Bell Shelter, and I know you probably have talked to everybody here about the Bell Shelter and what he's done with the Salvation Army, it has really been incredible. Those of you that attended my swearing-in know that Judge Pragerson swore me in as a council member and almost married me that day I was being sworn in, so we decided actually then to have him officiate our wedding. Judge Pragerson is someone who is a model in this country about utilizing, I think, judicial ability to make a difference in the lives of so many people. And although he has been one of controversy sometime, good controversy, where he has taken positions that have challenged, everyone respects what he stands for, his belief in the system, and his commitment. And as he mentioned, I wasn't going to mention your age, Judge, but since you did, at 80 years old, he is still going strong. And I think this is a wonderful tribute that Ms. Perry has designated here in Los Angeles. I'm just pleased to stand here with my colleagues congratulating you, Judge, for all that you do and all that you're going to continue to do. He's one of the best nudges I know as a judge, and I call him a friend. Thank you so much. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. Judge Pragerson, I just want to take a moment to thank you. There are many children, many families who don't realize the role you've played in their lives. These are many young people, folks who were in dire straits, who are now living in great housing in Lincoln Heights, in Pico Union, in Westlake. I've had the opportunity to share those great ribbon cuttings with you, and it's astounding how much folks like yourselves are overlooked, the critical roles you play in the background. You don't look for the headlines in terms of where am I on the stage. You look for the headlines, and those are the kinds of folks that I truly appreciate. And from the bottom of my heart, for all those kids and families, thank you so much for your commitment and dedication and true and sincere concern for their quality of life. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Mr. Labange?
Thank you, Mr. President. Judge Pragerson, I just want to take a moment to thank you. There are many children, many families who don't realize the role you've played in their lives. These are many young people, folks who were in dire straits, who are now living in great housing in Lincoln Heights, in Pico Union, in Westlake. I've had the opportunity to share those great ribbon cuttings with you, and it's astounding how much folks like yourselves are overlooked, the critical roles you play in the background. You don't look for the headlines in terms of where am I on the stage. You look for the headlines, and those are the kinds of folks that I truly appreciate. And from the bottom of my heart, for all those kids and families, thank you so much for your commitment and dedication and true and sincere concern for their quality of life. Thank you so much.
Mr. Labange?
Thank you, Mr. President. Judge Pragerson, and David, fourth-generation, Angelino, you've got to do what your great-grandfather did. Twice a day, Judge Pragerson's father walked Mitchell Torita Street, one of the steepest streets in the city, to deliver mail for the United States Postal Service. That correct, Judge?
Absolutely.
And that's what capable... So healthy heart, a healthy heart for you and everybody to climb that big street and serve the people and deliver the mail. But you've delivered the mail for Los Angeles and the people of Los Angeles for many, many years. You've had your handprints on so many projects, from the Century Freeway to the Coliseum, to the work that you're doing in the very needed area, to your work with veterans' housing, which is so important. I remember going...
This is a 5th grade from Haskell Elementary School. And this year, I understand they're studying government. And they've elected officials from the government and everything, so we welcome to City Hall. I hope you enjoy your tour today and see what goes on at the city level. And unlike the state of California, we've got things pretty well under control here. So enjoy your tour today. Thank you for coming down. And I hope you have a great day here at City Hall. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Members, we're still one shy of a quorum. Do we have any other introductions or presentations this morning? Before we can officially get started? If not, then bear with us here as we expect a number of members to arrive any moment. Ms. Perry for a special introduction.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I know that Ms. Gruel would like to speak on this item regarding Judge Pragerson. Let's see, I know he's here somewhere. If Judge Pragerson could... Okay, where is he? Oh, Judge Pragerson, come on up here and at least sit in the front row. We thought Wendy Gruel and I thought that it would be best that we just speak about this item now so that you didn't have to wait all day, since you are such an important person, not only a 9th Circuit Judge, but what's more important to me is the tremendous amount of work and energy and zeal and love and compassion that you have shown to the homeless community and working to make sure that homeless people are given the resources and opportunities that the rest of us have. And I want to say personally how much I appreciate that, which is why I was so pleased to name the intersection of Hill and First Street, or make the motion to name the intersection of Hill and First Street after you as Judge Harry Pragerson Square. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Perry. Actually, members, we have a quorum now. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohan, Labange, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vierigosa, Weiss, Stein, Padilla, 10 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. And I see Ms. Gruel, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Labange have pressed their buttons. What I'd like to do is ask for you to keep your comments until the time where the actual agenda item comes up. Okay, of course. Never say no to a judge. But council members, comment if you could hold them until we actually take the agenda item up, which will be in a few minutes.
I want to thank the City Council for this honor. And I want to thank Councilwoman Perry for moving that corner of First and Hill be designated as Harry Pragerson Square. I just have one question, and that is this: If things get tough and I've got to go back on a corner selling newspapers, do I have to have a permit to sell papers on First and Hill? What?
It'll be revocable.
Be revocable?
Yes.
All right, well, there goes a big portion of my income. But I just want to say this: I was born in this city. I'm 80 years old. I've lived here all my life, except for time in the service and time away in Berkeley for law school. I love this city. I'm a product of this city. I'm a product of the L.A. Unified School District, and I'm proud of that. I think that this City Hall was built, I'm not positive, the same year that I was born, which was 19...
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven? I thought it was 23. Well, whatever.
When was it built, the building?
When did they lay the cornerstone? Well, I'm older than this building then, you know. And so I'd like to thank the council. And I want to introduce two members of my family. Come up here, Bradley. I mean, Dave. Come on. Sharon. This is my grandson, David Pragerson. He's going to be another Steven Spielberg. He's a fourth-generation Los Angeles native. Did you know that, Dave?
No.
Well, you found out right now. And also, my daughter-in-law, Sharon Pragerson, who works very, very actively in childcare centers and in the homeless project that we have for families. So I want to thank Cindy, and I want to thank them for coming down here. All right?
Thank you, Judge. There's a few of us that want to say something about you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, what we'll do, colleagues, now is, you know what? Let's just go ahead and transition to item number 30. The clerk will read the item, please.
Item number 30 is Perry Vierigosa motion designating the Harry Pragerson Square at First and Hill.
Okay, and Ms. Gruel wishes to speak, followed by Mr. Reyes and Mr. Labange?
Thank you, Mr. Padilla, and thank you for letting us go out of order. It's not often that we have a 9th Circuit Judge here in our council chambers. And I want to thank Ms. Perry for making this motion to designate this square for Harry Pragerson. Harry Pragerson has been someone who has had a tremendous influence on the city, on the state, and in this country. There is a childcare center that is named after him. And that's just one of the many childcare centers that he helped ensure that we worked with General Services and the federal government to set up while I worked for Mayor Bradley. He also has been a strong advocate on the issue of homelessness. And if you haven't been to the Bell Shelter, and I know you probably have talked to everybody here about the Bell Shelter and what he's done with the Salvation Army, it has really been incredible. Those of you that attended my swearing-in know that Judge Pragerson swore me in as a council member and almost married me that day I was being sworn in. So we decided actually then to have him officiate our wedding. Judge Pragerson is someone who is a model in this country about utilizing, I think, judicial ability to make a difference in the lives of so many people. And although he has been one of controversy sometime, good controversy, where he has taken positions that have challenged, everyone respects what he stands for, his belief in the system, and his commitment. And as he mentioned, I wasn't going to mention your age, Judge, but since you did, at 80 years old, he is still going strong. And I think this is a wonderful tribute that Ms. Perry has designated here in Los Angeles. I'm just pleased to stand here with my colleagues congratulating you, Judge, for all that you do and all that you're going to continue to do. He's one of the best judges I know as a judge, and I call him a friend. Thank you so much. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Judge Pragerson, I just want to take a moment to thank you. There are many children, many families, who don't realize the role you've played in their lives. These are many young people, folks who were in dire straits, who are now living in great housing in Lincoln Heights, in Pico Union, in Westlake. I've had the opportunity to share those great ribbon cuttings with you. And it's astounding how much folks like yourselves are overlooked, the critical roles you play in the background. You don't look for the headlights in terms of where am I on the stage? You look for the headlines. And those are the kinds of folks that I truly appreciate. And from the bottom of my heart, for all those kids and families, thank you so much for your commitment and dedication and a true and sincere concern for their quality of life. Thank you so much.
Mr. Labange.
Mr. President, Judge Pragerson, and David, fourth-generation. Angelino, you've got to do what your great-grandfather did. Twice a day, Judge Pragerson's father walked Mitchell Torita Street, one of the steepest streets in the city, to deliver mail for the United States Postal Service. That correct, Judge?
Absolutely.
And that's what capable... So Healthy Heart, a healthy heart for you and everybody to climb that big street and serve the people and deliver the mail. But you've delivered the mail for Los Angeles and the people of Los Angeles for many, many years. You've had your handprints on so many projects, from the Century Freeway to the Coliseum, to the work that you're doing in a very needed area, to your work with Veterans Housing, which is so important. I remember going to a dedication in Westwood and the new building that you helped push to get built there with their architecture design, so you don't hear the sound of the roar of the San Diego Freeway to provide housing. And work with the Salvation Army and the greatest holiday festival at the convention center every year. You're truly an angel in the City of Angels, and I'm so proud of you, and I'm proud that First and Hill is going to be your square, because you're ahead of your time, Judge. Because you know what's going to be on the First and Hill as soon as they fund it? A new federal courthouse, right there on that corner, if I have it correct. Is that right, Jan? If the funding gets there, if the funding gets there. Anyway.
Good selection.
Hey.
Thank you.
I just want to do this for you and for the children here. From Main, you spring to Broadway, up to Hill to Olive. Wouldn't it be grand if I could hope to pick a flower on Figueroa? One of those streets is yours, Judge, and that's Hill, First and Hill. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Misakowski.
One thing that you left out, Tom, and that is that I spent about 25 years on the Hyperion case. And through that activity, I acquired the sobriquet, I guess that's how you say it, of the sludge judge.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla.
Thank you very much.
Judge, one more person here, Cindy Misakowski. And I just wanted to say, as I listen to my colleagues talk about being at openings throughout this city, and Tom, I didn't know the story about walking up Michael Torina and the Healthy Heart. It also, I think, gave your father a big heart that you inherited, because the big heart is shown throughout this city. And although that shelter that Tom talked about, the housing, it's not a shelter, the housing on Sepulveda is for vets, the important thing about it is it's for vets who have gone through a program, who have gone through issues of dealing with various, whether addictions to drug, alcoholism, or the like. But they've made themselves whole again, they've made themselves good and clean. And that housing is where they come back after having been in transitional housing to be with their families. It's a place, and that's why the childcare center is there as well. So they are coming back to become part again of mainstream people in society who can give back. And that is your legacy. You have taught people and give people the way in which they can give back, because that's all that you do. You are the model for that. And it's just, it's wonderful that there is someplace in our city street network that is now named for you, a square, that says, "The courthouse is there." The other good things we are doing in the city, near-city government, carry your name and, I think, forever your legacy. Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy.
Mr. Vierigosa.
Mr. Pragerson.
Let's talk about Boyle Heights now.
Yes, well, I wanted to talk about Boyle Heights, but before I do, let me talk about you. You know, when you think about a federal court judge and what, all of the very, very important issues that you deal with every day, it's great to know that someone like you, who grew up in a great place like Boyle Heights, and for members, if you haven't heard me say this before, Boyle Heights, in many ways, in the '20s and '30s and the '40s, was much like what L.A. is today, was the gateway to Los Angeles. There were African-Americans, Asians, Japanese-Americans specifically, Jews, Mexicans, White Russians. There was this great community there of working-class people, of people the salt of the earth, if you will. And people like you, who lived there, had an appreciation for what it is to work with your hands, what it is to struggle, what it is to strive for the American dream. And we make this designation today, not just because you grew up in Boyle Heights, but because you represent the best that Boyle Heights and Los Angeles, and indeed, America has to offer. You, as a judge, have reflected those experiences when you fought for civil rights, when you spoken out against injustice, when you've been that judge or arbiter, if you will, of what justice is. So I'm excited to be a part of this resolution. We honor you, not just because you grew up in Boyle Heights, but because you really represent the sentiment of those hard-working immigrants and working people there. And your opinions have always reflected that. Congratulations.
Thank you, Antonio.
Mr. Cardenas.
Judge, you've been recognized and complimented for your accolades and your strength and your willingness to be right and do righteous for what is correct and what you know in your heart is the right thing to do. But more importantly, keeping all that in mind and being consistent with the Constitution of this country and the state of California and of the people, citizen or non-citizen, treating people like human beings. I just wanted to point out that when you're a judge, perhaps one of your strongest moments is when you're the minority vote. And I just want to thank you so much for being the minority vote and sticking to what you know is right when you know it's not popular. Thank you so much for being there. Thank you so much for being yourself. And thank you so much for standing up for people, even though it's not the popular thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Your Honor, it's great to see you this morning. And I just want to tell you that in the years that I spent as an attorney in the federal judicial system, in the U.S. Attorney's Office, I never appeared in front of you. You were never on any of my panels in the 9th Circuit. But I did appear in front of another Judge Pragerson several times. And I want to tell you that not just him, but so many of the judges in the building across the street, they act in a certain way. There's a certain dignity to their rulings. There is a certain manner they have about them. It's a very impressive federal bench we have here in Los Angeles. It has performed very capably and very well over the years. And one of the reasons is because you have been a role model for so many of the judges that I know across the street. And I know the impact that you have had, not just directly in the cases in which you have sat and the cases you've heard over the years, but I know the impact you've had as a mentor, as an example, and as a role model to so many people who practice and sit in the federal court across the street. There is no more fitting name for this square than yours as a leader, if not the leader, in the judiciary in Los Angeles. I want to thank my colleagues, Jan Perry and Antonio Vierigosa, for recognizing you and for ensuring that all the judges and lawyers who come after us will have the opportunity to learn about you, to learn about what you stood for, and to learn about the tremendous difference that you made for so many of us in Los Angeles. Thank you very much for gracing us today. Thank you so much for your decades of service. And thank you, Jan and Antonio, for ensuring that Angelinos in the future will learn about them as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. And colleagues, as a reminder, we do have item number 30, the actual motion before us. I believe we're ready for a vote. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Colleagues, appreciate your indulgence on item number 30. We do have a busy morning with several both important folks in the audience and urgent items on the agenda. What I'd like to do is go through the agenda, as well as the special meeting agenda, dispense with consent items, and assuming the following items are called special, take out of order. The first batch will be items number 2, 25, and 26, which are related in subject matter. We can consider them concurrently and hear from officials from the school district who are here. Following those items, we'll take up item 14, matter in the 10th district, I believe, along with item number 2 soon thereafter. And then proceed with the balance of the agenda. Any questions? If not, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Vierigosa moves. Mr. Weiss seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Cardenas moves, and Mr. Labange seconds.
Mr. President, do you wish to take a public comment at this time?
Let me recognize that we have not received requests from members of the public to address the council under general public comment for today's meeting. Public comment on non-agenda items is closed. Next item.
Do you wish to go through the agenda and then take up those items called special?
Let's call specials and dispense with consent items, please.
Okay. Item number 1 is a public convenience and necessity in Council District 3. A motion is required to deny the application.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Item number 1, matter in Council District 3, Mr. Stein's not expected today. Do we have a time limit on this file?
Yes, there is. The time limit is Friday, and there will not be a council meeting on Friday.
Okay. Members, we have a recommendation to deny this item without prejudice. Mr. Smith moves. Any further discussion? If not, let's open the roll on item number 1, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That motion is adopted. Next item, please.
Item 2 is a special presentation by L.A. USD.
Let's hold item 2 on the desk. Call this matter special to be heard, along with item 25 and 26.
And the next items, then, would be items for which public hearings have been held, items 3 through 18.
Members 3 through 18 now before us. Public hearings have been held on these items. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Do we have any requests for specials? Mr. Weiss.
Three, please.
Item 3 called special by Mr. Weiss. Ms. Misakowski?
Change.
Thirteen called special by Ms. Misakowski. Ms. Han. Nine called special by Ms. Han. Mr. Ludlow?
Fourteen.
Fourteen called special by Mr. Ludlow. Mr. Weiss? Eighteen called special by Mr. Weiss. Any other specials? Colleagues, items 3 through 18.
Mr. President, 29.
Almost there. Items 3 through 18 currently before us, we have 3, 9, 13, 14, and 18 called special. On the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, 19 through 34. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, items 19 through 34 are now before us. Do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open. Public hearings are closed. Madam Clerk, we have received a request to continue item number 33 to March 16th.
Yes.
If there's any objection, seeing none, item 33 is continued. 25 and 26 have been called special. Item 30 has been acted upon. Ms. Han. 27 called special by Ms. Han. Any other specials?
Mr. Smith wanted item number 29 called special.
29 called special by Mr. Smith. Seeing no further requests for specials, colleagues, items 19 through 34, with the exceptions of 25, 26, 27, 29, and 33. Those are called special. Mr. Labange.
Extra special.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are extra approved. Next items, please.
The next items are the closed sessions, items 35 through 41. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Let's hold all closed-session matters on the desk, please.
Next item would be on the continuation page, item number 42.
42 now before us, a matter which has had a public hearing. Members wish to call this item special? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with an item number 12, please. Next item.
Going back to the items called special, do you wish to take up item number 2 at this time?
Before we go to those matters, let me temporarily recess the regular meeting agenda. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on the special meeting?
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohan, Labange, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vierigosa, Weiss, Stein, Padilla, 13 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The special meeting is now in session. We do have a three-item agenda. All three items have had public hearings. Do we have any requests for specials? Mr. Ludlow calls item number 2 of the special meeting agenda special. Do we have requests for special on item 1 or item number 3?
And, excuse me, Budget and Finance Committee reports have been submitted on these matters.
Okay, on those Budget and Finance reports and recommendations for item number 1 and item number 3 of the special agenda, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved, and I believe we can continue item number 2 of the special meeting to the regular meeting, without objection. Let's now adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular meeting and take up items 2, 25, and 26 first. To our friends at the school district, please come forward. Thank you for your patience this morning. First of all, recognize the president of the school board, school board member Jose Wezar. Why don't you go ahead and come forward and sit at the table here. And he's joined by the superintendent, Roy Romer, the Honorable Roy Romer. We do have a couple of speaker cards on this item, which I'll turn to after we hear from Mr. Wezar and Mr. Romer.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Council President Padilla, for allowing us to come to you and speak today on a very, very important item. And before I begin, I want to thank each and every one of you for the support you've given to our schools, for the support you've given to our children, and for the support you've given to L.A. Unified School District. I think we're in an unprecedented time where we find ourselves in cooperation, collaboration, and partnership, not only in our construction program, but also in making lives better for our children throughout this city. We need children to come to school ready to learn, and we can only do that if we continue to work in partnership with the communities and with the city council. Now, we're here today to ask for your support for Measure R and Proposition 55. These two measures will give us the funding that we need to continue building schools and to continue to repair schools. Let me begin by saying that we are on a spectacular, tremendous road to finally, finally deliver these schools that these children have been waiting for over 30 years. Prior to 1997, L.A. Unified had not passed a bond measure for over 30 years. Now that we're getting the funding that we need to build the schools and the competence that we need to build the schools, we need to continue on this trajectory, and we need to finally deliver on the progress. We all know that many of our schools are overcrowded. But let me speak to you briefly about what that means for our children. Over 16,000 children are bused from their local community each and every day because they do not have a seat in their local school. What does that mean? It means that children spend 2 to 4 hours on a bus when they could be spending in after-school programs, when they could be spending reading, and when they could be spending learning about their instructional program. In addition to that, over 50% of our children attend year-round, multi-track calendar. These calendars present tremendous inequities. We want to get rid of the multi-track, year-round calendars. If Measure R passes, we reduce that number from 50% to anywhere between 10% to 15% of our students who remain on multi-track, year-round calendar. And finally, just let me say, even if we did not have this overcrowding problem, the way we finance our schools today, we have to go to the voters to get the funds we need to repair our schools. Our schools need painting, they need plumbing, they need air conditioning, and those things that create a good environment for our students to grow and learn. So even if we did not have the overcrowding, we would still have to go to the voters to ask for their support to invest in education. I thank you for your support, and as I started with my comments today, we've already formed a great partnership in many of the things we're doing, and we hope we can continue that progress with your support of Measure R and Proposition 55. Thank you very much. Also with us today is Superintendent Romer and the president of UTLA, John Perez, who would share a few remarks.
Governor.
Thank you, Jose. Mr. President, members of the council, I am John Perez. I'm the president of United Teachers Los Angeles, a resident of Mr. Cardenas's council district. And my two daughters graduated from L.A. USD schools. One graduated from the Performing Arts Magnet at Van Nuys High School. The other graduated from the local high school, Polytechnic. Both of my daughters spent all or part of their years in L.A. Unified in year-round, multi-track schools. As a parent, I can tell you that we need these bonds desperately in order to get our students back to a traditional calendar. Let me tell you what one of the problems is for our teachers. We all know that science is predicated on experimentation. We have teachers in our district, from all over the district, from the south side to the north side, that actually have shopping carts with their science equipment in them, loaded up to go, because they do not have a classroom for every single period of the day. And this is in our middle schools, this is in our high schools. And these teachers literally race with their students down the halls with their shopping cart and their experimental equipment, going from one room to the next. Now, that is not a good way to run a railroad, as they say. That is not a way for a science teacher to bring to their students the scientific method. And so we need these schools. And in the multi-track schools, there isn't enough time in the school year to do the deferred maintenance that needs to be done on our schools, just to keep them up, because the schools are in session practically every single day of the calendar year. It is important for our community to continue to support our schools. And I want to... And I want to commend the district for building these schools. I know that when I travel from my office in downtown Los Angeles to my home in the San Fernando Valley, in the eastern valley, I see schools going up. And we need to make sure that we continue this building project. We need to make sure that we have the money to get all of our students off of the multi-track calendar, back to a traditional calendar. This will go a long way to helping us continue the improvement that we've seen in the test scores of our students for the last six years. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, please vote in favor of these two resolutions. Thank you very much.
Governor.
Jim McConnell is going to give us a brief update on where we are, and then I'm going to close.
Good morning, and I wanted to thank council members who have projects in their districts for the continued support of this very important program. I am Jim McConnell, chief facilities executive. As chief facilities executive, my job is really, simply put, it is to build new schools and to make existing school facilities better. To define that challenge, we need two hundred thousand new seats on the new construction side of the house. On the existing facility side of the house, we have twelve thousand buildings, the average age of which is fifty years. We've completed ten thousand of twelve thousand projects promised under Prop BB. We have tens of thousands of projects yet to be done in our existing facilities. I want to update you, though, on our new construction program. I think this is what drives us right now. We do this in two phases. It is currently a program that has two hundred and forty-three projects in it, five point nine billion dollars. The first phase is under construction. The second phase is in planning. Those of you who have projects in your district have been closely engaged in the planning for the second phase of this program, and we appreciate that. In the first phase, which is under construction, twenty-three projects are done. Eight of those projects are schools, fifteen are major additions to schools. Eighty-two projects today are under construction for a total of one point three billion dollars in construction right now. We will deliver in two thousand and four twenty-five thousand new school seats. That's a remarkable statistic. And in two thousand and five, we will deliver twenty-seven thousand new school seats in this program, projects under construction right now. A few statistics about this program. If Measure R passes, we will be a thirteen billion dollar program, which will return nine hundred and thirty-three million dollars in tax revenues to the local governments. We will create two hundred and forty acres of parkland, green space, and recreational space in Phase One alone. We will have cleaned up four hundred and forty acres environmentally clean on which we've built these new schools. We will have planted twelve thousand new trees, ten million square feet of grass. But I think most importantly, Phase One delivers, and Phase Two, one hundred and fourteen thousand of the two hundred thousand school seats we need. So Measure R passes, we'll add another forty-nine thousand to that for a total of one hundred and sixty-three thousand of the two hundred thousand seats that need to be built. I have a short videotape that I'd like to run through with you that just catalogs some of the— nine of the eighty-two projects under construction. If I could run that videotape now, I'd like to run through it with you. The first school that we see here is the new high school being built on the old Santee Dairy site, just a couple of miles south of here. It is a comprehensive high school for twenty-two hundred students. It's on eighteen and a half acres, and it— and we've jumped right to Jefferson Elementary School, too. This is one that we cut the ribbon on Monday in Ms. Perry's area. This is a school that started in ninety-five, was shut down in ninety-six. We restarted it last year and finished it in thirteen months and cut the ribbon just Monday for eight hundred and forty new students. It's a beautiful new school. This next is Orthopedic Hospital, the high school that's under construction adjacent to Orthopedic Hospital. This will be a medical magnet with focus on health care training. It started last June. It will finish this July. It's a— it's a magnet school for seven hundred and sixty-two students on about four and a half acres of land. This next school is in the valley. This is at the old Van Nuys Drive-In, the property we bought from Bert Bachmann. It's fourteen point four acres, sixteen hundred and twenty students. It's about sixty-five percent complete. It will open in fall of oh-four for the next school year, for this upcoming school year. This next project is one of interest. This is our new campus on the CSUN University. It is a teachers' academy. It's on five point five acres there of the CSUN campus. It's for about eight hundred and seventy students. We— it is a joint partnership with the college, and we'll have shared facilities and shared programmatic opportunities at CSUN. This next one may be the most remarkable school in our first phase. This is the new elementary school at the Science Center. It's another joint venture with the Science Center, a remarkable design that joins a cutting-edge new elementary school to a hundred-year-old armory there, adjacent to USC. This will be the best science elementary school in the country. It's a remarkable project. Again, it will open this year. This next one is the Carnation Site in the valley, the old Carnation— the Jemco Site, the old Jemco Site in Mr. Cardenas's old neighborhood. Fifteen hundred and twelve students. It stands today about forty-five percent complete. It will be opened— well, construction complete and early oh-five open in the oh-five school We're excited about this next one, too. This is a private-public venture with the Accelerated Charter School, again, just a couple of miles south of here. The Accelerated School is a private enterprise who shared in the cost of this new facility, eight hundred students on about four point four acres. It's seventy percent complete. It will be completed this fall and open for this next school year in oh-four. It's on the corner of Main and Martin Luther Boulevard. Accelerated was the Time School of the Year last year. This next project is at the old Carnation Site up in the valley. It's twenty-one hundred and forty-two students. It's the least complete of the projects I'm showing you today. We broke ground on this last October. It's today about twenty percent complete. Will be completed in fall of oh-five for a school year oh-five opening. And with that, I'd turn it over to Governor Romer.
Governor.
One of the things that I think we may miss in this community is the historic nature of what we're doing here. There has never been, in the history of the United States, as many schools built in such short a period of time in any one location. Never. This is like building all the schools of San Diego right in the city of Los Angeles at one time. This is very, very historic. Now, that's the first thing I want to say. The second thing is that you all were given a blue pamphlet, and in the right-hand side you'll see our scores. And the point about thinking about building is that it's a tool. It's a means to an end, and the end is to improve instruction. If you will look at this score chart, we are on a fast track up in this district. In the elementary grades, we have been increasing our scores at twice the rate of the average school in California for the last four years. Now, this district is on the move. The importance of Measure R is we need to continue that momentum and to finish unloading, unpacking some of this overcrowding. I want to just conclude by saying how important this is. I was governor for twelve years. I was chairman of the fifty governors. I was big on economic development. Anytime I brought a prospect to Colorado, the first and most important question they ever asked was, what is the quality of your educational system? It is simply the most fundamental building block of this city council in terms of the economic future and the social future of this city. There's just nothing, nothing, that is as important as this. So even though there is, quote, a separate jurisdiction called the school district, we are partners, hand in hand, with the city council and the city in terms of what? Of reshaping the face of Los Angeles. If you take the hundred and fifty-plus or minus schools that we're going to build with your help, it opens the opportunity for neighborhood realignment, a new way of organizing communities, a new way of revitalizing participation of members of that community in the life of the city. This is a historic event, and I just want everybody goes that ballot. I—you'll notice I got a voted sticker. I went this morning, and as I pushed that button, I felt that I was participating in something that was the most important thing that could be done in terms of the future of this city. And so we are here this morning saying we very much would like to have your help, but not just in the resolution, but in passing the word between now and next Tuesday, because this can be a close election. And when you have so much at stake, we need everybody in this room to think in their mind, just as we're doing, as who are the five people they're going to call and say, get out to that— to that voting booth and pull that lever the right way. And it's not just for Measure R, but also for Proposition fifty-five. We need them both. Fifty-five will give us a matching capacity, and the state needs that. So let me say—I really want to say on behalf of this school district, you've been a good partner. We want to continue that partnership, and nothing— there's nothing more important than these seven hundred and fifty thousand kids that we mutually represent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Governor. Before beginning with council discussion, we do have one speaker card on this item. Bill Powers. Please come forward at this time.
Oh, is there a question?
No, there's a speaker.
No, we're— On the other item? Any speakers on items two, twenty-five, or twenty-six? We're considering them concurrently. Okay, if not, that concludes public comment on this item. Colleagues, I have, first of all, Ms. Hahn as a co-author of the original resolution to speak first, followed by Mr. Reyes, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Smith, Mr. Labange, Mr. Villarosa, and Mr. Garcetti. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was very happy to co-sponsor this resolution before this body this morning, and I'm—I hope we get a unanimous support of this. And as the chairwoman for our Committee on Education and Neighborhoods, you're right, Governor Romer. We have a partnership, probably the first time in our history that the city of Los Angeles has really understood what you said, that, you know, your constituents in the schools are our constituents. And there is nothing more important to the economic development, the social development, the revitalization of our neighborhoods and our city than good schools. Good schools that are not overcrowded, that have been repaired, that don't have leaking roofs, that don't have crummy bathrooms. That is important to all of us. And you're right, when people come to look to relocate their businesses here in Los Angeles, that's the first thing they want to know. Where are the good schools? This is—you know, we got a business, but it's our kids we care about. The new owners are the Dodgers. Frank and Jamie McCourt, that's one of the first things they said when they were looking to buy a place here in Los Angeles, you know? Where are the good schools? Because, you know, we may be the owners of the Dodgers, but we still have kids, and we need to make sure that they're able to go to a good school. So it is important, and I am in complete support of Measure R and fifty-five. Measure R will do exactly what you've said. It will repair schools. It will fix them. It will upgrade their safety systems, their fire systems. It will renovate some of those really old classrooms, old playgrounds, old restrooms. And it—you know, and the safety issue, Measure R is going to help us have the kind of money we need to really kind of remove the hazardous, asbestos, and other things that are really jeopardizing the safety of our kids. I know in my district, as is everybody's district, I stand to receive a lot of repairs for a lot of schools that have gone way too long without the needed repairs that are important for them. So, you know, there's nothing more important that I think we can do today than to support this. And you're right, this body—I mean, we support a lot of things, and we have a voice. We're the second-largest city in the country, and when we speak, people listen. And I think the fact that this body is going to go on record supporting Measure R and fifty-five, voters need to understand, unless our Measure R passes and fifty-five passes, you know, we're not going to be able to, you know, access the kinds of funds for school repair and construction. So everybody needs to understand, we need to do our fair share here locally to be able to access state funds. And hopefully, all of us will get on the phone, maybe do some doorbell ringing and encourage people. I know I have a weekly column in a local newspaper, and I'm going to use it this week. I'm going to take the whole column and talk about how important it is for people to come out and support Measure R and support our schools. Thanks for what you've done, and we do have a great relationship, finally, between the city of Los Angeles and the school board, and we know how important it is. So thanks for what you're doing.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. First, I want to thank everyone at the table and your whole team for the great work in making believers of many of the citizenry of Los Angeles for the great work you've done. I have a whole list of projects that you've either completed or are in the process of construction, areas in Pico Union and Westlake, Temple Bowdery area, exploring sites in the Cypress Park, Lincoln Heights area. But I also wanted to focus a little on why we should support Measure R. You know, colleagues, we talk about the issues of gang violence. We talk about the issues of how our young people are suffering from epidemic proportions of diabetes, teen pregnancy. We talk about the latchkey children. We talk about how it is that we improve our programs for our schools and our school— and our city facilities. And bottom line, without Measure R, we won't be able to address those issues, because it's about education. It's about access to a controlled environment, access to an environment that speaks to how we as adults, we as elected officials, those of us who run neighborhood councils, who run these different kinds of programs throughout the city, show our young people that we truly care and love them. And how do we do that? We take care of their education. We take care of their needs as they get out of school. After-school programs, so critical. Brandon has made it clear, the highest time of crime is between two and six o'clock, the time when parents haven't gone home yet, the time when there is least amount of supervision. And this is where we need—and this is why we need—a school that's desirable, a school that smells clean, where they can go to the restrooms. Hate to bring that up. But the bottom line is, these are the kinds of improvements that Measure R will essentially address. Another key point, if I may, is that I know as elected officials, a person who grew up in these communities, that we need to get not only the school, but the city family to work and a much more— because we've learned a lot. We've learned how to work together. But in a case like transportation, transit corridors, our impact and where we put traffic lights is key. It's fundamental. Many of our streets are very congested, they're heavily traveled, and we're putting schools next to high corridors where you have high levels of traffic. We need more traffic lights. So I know I need to get the DOT to see that, and I need to get the school district to come to that point, and we'll get there. But the bottom line is, I'm going to thank you. I want to thank you for getting the big monkey off our back, was the Belmont School. Now, it's a wonderful park. It's a wonderful institution. It's going to be a great place, and the fact that we are actually leveraging our open space, historically with the state's help and the city's participation, we got acreage of parks that will never have been seen ever in the inner city of the city. And to have the school district there for us is great. So again, I want to thank you, and I want to encourage everyone listening, vote yes on Measure R. We need this for our future. And we're going to keep jobs in this city. We're going to keep industry in the city. We need an educated workforce, and we can't have an educated workforce without schools. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas.
Serious issue. Today, we heard a very wonderful human being say that he is a graduate of Los Angeles Unified School District and a proud graduate, Judge Pragerson, someone we're all proud of and someone who certainly has used his education wisely for the benefit of society. But yet, at the same time, I'm here to stand in front of the people of Los Angeles and say, for several generations, this school district failed to build the schools that we needed. And now, we have embarked on a journey of actually catching up on that failed attempt to educate our children without giving them the classroom space that they needed, without giving the teachers the tools that they need to educate our children. And I'll admit to you today that six and seven years ago, when I entered the state legislature and I tried to help the school district build some schools and figure out how I can be a positive help to that process, they were failing at trying to get off the ground. But what I'm here to say today, the school district is building schools responsibly. But what I'm here to say today, the school district is building schools responsibly, efficiently, and at a rate that has been unprecedented around the country. And you're absolutely right, Governor Romer, we are building schools in a project, in a way that we, this country has never seen. And thank God, because we waited too long, we rested on our laurels. But as of late, in the last eight years or so, the people of Los Angeles and the people of the state of California have said, okay, I'm willing to pass bonds as long as you build the schools that you promise. And that wasn't happening six and seven years ago, I must admit, but today, it is happening responsibly, it is happening efficiently, it is happening in a way that the people, the public, if they look into it today, if they take a snapshot of three years ago, two years ago, today and tomorrow, they can see that this is the right thing to do, that you are doing the right thing. Judge Romer, Governor Romer, I'm here to tell you, in a way, you are a judge, judging all the things that you have to do for 750,000 children and everybody in it, in this system. But when you came to me in Sacramento, I admitted to you that I wasn't sure that I wanted to change the law like you asked me to, to make sure that LA got its fair share of state bond dollars. And you expressed to me that we were going to get next to nothing had we not changed it. So you made a promise to me, if I changed it, you would change the school district and the way they build schools. And since we did so, you called me one day and said, thank you very much. Now that the law is different, we received more than the $37 million we would otherwise received, we received over $600 million. And I'm here to say proudly that you put that money to good use. You kept your word to the people of Los Angeles, you kept your word to me, you kept your word to the children of this great city. So I want to thank you very much for holding to that and I'm going to continue to hold you to be responsible, continue to hold you to improve like you promised. You will constantly improve the way you build schools, you will constantly improve what the job that you are doing. I'm here to say, I know the details of the schools that you're building, I know the schools that were in this presentation today, and I'm very proud to say and to tell the taxpayers and the voters of Los Angeles, this is the right thing to do. We are on the right track. Proposition 55, Measure R, is going to be put in the right place, in the right way to serve our children. And these people here are here to testify that they are on the right track and they're continuing to do the right thing. I think it's responsible and the right thing for the city of Los Angeles to do is to get behind you and to collaborate with you and work with you to pass these measures and make sure that you do right by the people and put the money to good use. Thank you and I'm here to support you and to support the measure.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Governor and board member, I want you to, first of all, I want to say, I'm not here to ding you or criticize you. I think what you've done in the first phase of the role has been truly extraordinary and you're to be commended for that. Savious projects of bringing the school district back and what you've done is great. I have some real strong concerns and I'm speaking on behalf of the neighborhood councils who have talked to me in my district about two particular projects that we're very upset about. First of all, 13 years ago, the city of LA went to Lentz to get you a school built in Porter Ranch. And before, both of you were on the, in the LA Unified, you're not to be saddled with this, but a decision was made to turn down the developer's offer to build you a school and instead, we took a reservation of a land for a future school. Today, in Porter Ranch, at Castle Bay Lane School, you have children housed in temporary buildings. In Chatsworth, you have children housed at Jermaine Street School in temporary buildings, but I cannot get your staff or your board to agree to build the Porter Ranch School. You have the land, it's been reserved, you actually could have had it built for you, but you turned it down, but nonetheless, you keep telling us it's in our future plans, but the future never gets here. And the people of Porter Ranch, Chatsworth, and Northridge are very upset because we keep getting future promises we never get delivered on. You keep coming forward with these bonds and it's never in there. And so the people of this community are very upset with you because all we keep getting is promises that someday we'll love you, but not today. Secondly, my bigger concern is what happened in court just two days ago, and that is, we had a hospital closed in our district. We had a bidder that wanted to come into bankruptcy court and buy it out of bankruptcy and open it as a hospital, a receiver for the city of Los Angeles Fire Department paramedics, which now are forced to go an additional five minutes away to take their ambulances and at risk people of the Northwest Valley's lives to take them further away. And as those hospitals, Northridge and Holy Cross are closed every day now from four to eight hours, they go further away. And I really wanted to bring that hospital back to life and instead, LA Unified walked in and said, we don't care what it costs, we're going to buy the property because we need a high school. I said, all along, I think it's appropriate for you to build that high school. I wanted to work with you. My staff sat in the courtroom and offered to work with your staff and try and find the land next door in the parking lots of the shopping center and maybe combine the two projects and find a way that we could work for one, to save the hospital, and then also build a high school at the same time. And instead, you said, no, we're here to buy this property and we don't care what it costs, we're going to build a high school there. And in bankruptcy court, you outbid, you bid $22.5 million for a piece of property that was worth $19 million and took our hospital away from us to build a high school. That was bad public policy, that was not in the best interest of the health and safety of the people of the Northwest San Fernando Valley, and I am very upset about it and our neighborhood councils are very upset about it, particularly because you didn't work with us when we offered to work with you to find a solution to that where we could have preserved both the hospital and built the high school. And so I'm on, I'm here today to say, I can't in good conscience support R, I will support 55. I cannot in good conscience support R because you have not dealt with the needs of my district and my neighborhood councils are very upset with you and they want to see something from you that shows that you really care about their community and they don't see it so far.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Labaj.
When appropriate, we'd like to respond to that.
Well, I just, you know, I'm sorry about that, Greg, and that situation, but I know our school district has been under tremendous pressure and has outbid all public agencies on the needs to find classroom spaces. And in my district, at Coinga Elementary School, there's 90 buses in the morning at 6:30 in the morning that take children to seats somewhere in the city, in the San Fernando Valley and West Los Angeles, and it's a tremendous challenge on that and it's unfortunate that it works out. I just wanted to thank you for what you're doing, okay? Because it's the faces of the mothers putting their children on the buses at Coinga Avenue Elementary School that I see in my image of that and the fact that children are getting up at 5:30 in the morning to make a bus. Ms. Hahn and I put a motion in today, which we talked about the other day briefly, Superintendent, to ask you to look at changing the school hours from these early starts. I know John Marshall High starts at 7:20, that you should start school at 8:30 or 9:00 because recent federal studies show that the young people can accelerate better when they're not, when they're not still in the sleepy eyes, sleep deprived, sleep deprived. So, but that's a future thing. But these measures are so important and making up for the lost time. I think it was Kathleen Brown, when she was a member, I know it was Kathleen Brown, when she was a member of the school board, was the first public official to call for needed challenges to overcrowding. And the first hearing was at Union Avenue Elementary School. And that used to be in the fourth district when I worked for John for oh so many years ago. And now, all this work that has done and the cooperative effort between all parties, between community, between the teachers, between the administrators and the district, you're building things which are so important. I see our park department here in the second and third row right here, and they're working cooperatively in North Hollywood to transfer land that the city owns and sale, and a sale adjacent to improve an elementary school that is a facility there. I just wanted to let you, ask you some questions, just real quick. What could we do? I know these are real important measures that we support and I appreciate the report and Mr. McConnell, that was a very good report. You were very quick and it was whoever did your photography did a good job, so compliment them. The, what can we do? Is any, does the city, anything we can do cooperatively? I know Jane Blumentfeld works with the planning department hand in hand with you. Is there anything additionally we could do to help you?
We, let me answer. We have under Measure K and Measure R, an opportunity to really work closely with the city on traffic patterns, on ways in which we can incorporate this building into the neighborhood, even the architectural style. We want to build them in a way in which it is a part of opening the neighborhood to the school and vice versa. So I think that is one very specific thing that we can do. Secondly, I believe in the whole area of safety of children going to and from school. This is an area that we all are going to have to spend more resources and time and creativity to figure out how to make students not only safe, but feel safe. And I would just mention those two areas.
Good, okay.
And I think also, for the first time ever in Measure K, we had some funding available to us for joint use planning and for joint use projects. And in Measure R, we have the same. We could work with the city and local council members to find ways to put those dollars to some good use.
Well, thank you. I support this so heartily. I will mention in 19, I think the last, there was A, B, and C, and I know there's nobody here, maybe John, you would know, there was A, B, and C in 1968 or 69 that passed, which was the last school bond before BB. No, 63, you sure it was 63? Well, all right, well, anyway, whatever it was, whatever the money was, they condemned the property on St. George Street across from the 356-yard track at John Marshall High. And they condemned it, closed the street, but the track never was fixed. And I know I'm just saying it publicly for all those barristers and graduates at John Marshall High, I'm going to continue to work with the district on every project they have citywide to get seats, but I also want to work with you to improve the track that has drains in their end zones, an eight-yard end zones. That's why we sometimes lost football games, Alex, we didn't have long enough end zones for our receivers to catch the balls. But to improve that at John Marshall High School for the track, and I think Lakehead High School, which just got its beautiful lights thanks to Ed Reyes this year, is the other short track in the city of Los Angeles. I think the young people, and for 34 years now, it was a district project. Now, once we get the seats squared away, I got commitments, we'll get the track squared away. Raise your right hand. Butcher, take the picture. Thank you.
Mr. Labaj Roosevelt has a short track also. Yes.
Mr. Varegoza.
Thank you, Mr. Labaj. Thank you, Ms. Hahn, for bringing this resolution or item to the council. Members, I dare say, if there is any more important initiative for us here on the council, it is to ensure that our schools are not only places of excellence, but they're places where we really honor our children. Some of you know I was the initiator, the author of Proposition 1A, which was then the largest school bond in the history of the nation. It was the first one to focus state monies on urban schools, a good portion, not just new schools in the outline areas, but money for modernization. I co-chaired BB, Prop K, and am very, very supportive of Proposition R. And I would like to say to all of you, when you think about a great neighborhood, when you're buying a home, what do you do? You find out what the school's like, the neighborhood public school. So if that's true for a neighborhood, this, a city made up of so many great neighborhoods, it's also true of a city. A great city has to have a public, a great public school system. We've seen that this school district, with all its many, many challenges and many, many problems, begun to turn around. We've seen scores go up, we've seen schools get built, we've seen a new leadership, frankly. It's exciting to see the president of the United Teachers of Los Angeles here with the president of the school board, with the superintendent, Governor Romer, all of you working together in a coalition to improve our schools and a coalition to really honor our children and putting our money where our mouth is. Make no mistake, this is important, members, because this R is not a done deal, Proposition R is not a done deal. We've seen that with respect to the statewide bond, that we've got some troubles, we need that bond to pass, but we also need this one to pass as well. We're going to have to talk to our neighbors. We're going to have to talk this up in the next week to make sure that we pass Proposition R. You saw the schools here. You've seen the, a new cooperation, I think, between the school district and the city council to cite schools, to work out joint use possibilities. Councilmember Garcetti and others, councilmember Reyes have been working with the school district to identify opportunities for joint use. So we rethink what schools look like, we put schools with parks and libraries, where we, you know, as Governor Romer said, revitalizing communities, using our schools and land use opportunities. We're doing the same thing along the gold line in, on the east side, where we're getting the school district to build a school right there on the line, we're getting a panoply of neighborhood cabinets, rather, that represent the city agencies, working together with the school district. This is a very important issue. And finally, let me just say to all of us, and I heard my, my great friend, councilmember Smith, but let me just say something about the priorities. I can tell you that I'm 1,000% supportive of this, even though I know that my district doesn't actually get as many schools as I would like to see. But essentially, what's been done here is they've done, they've done this, they've made priorities based on need. There, all of us need more schools, but some areas need more schools than others. And I'm willing to support this proposition because I know that Tony Cardenas needs more schools. I know that there are parts in the city that really have the very overcrowded schools. So I thank you, members, for this. All of us have to get behind this. It's a very, very important initiative to complete our promise to the children of this city that we're going to make them our priority.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and congratulations to each one of you on behalf of the citizens that I represent. I want to thank you, the hard-working teachers, the administration, and the school board for really leading the way in what we see reflected here. If I can brag for a moment, Allesian Heights Elementary School, which is a block from my house, the second year in a row, it had the highest gains, I think, of any school in the country. And it's very impressive and I feel that and know that when I talk to my neighbors, it's something that they feel and know every single day, the progress that we are making. And it really has taken a partnership. I mean, just to take that school, we were able to bring a new LA's best program there two years ago. You guys invested more in the school as well and empowered the teachers there, empowered the students to be able to learn and we see the results. I rise in strong support of both of these measures and I think it's very clear and I appreciate, Superintendent, that you said, everybody here in this room needs to, to think about these and do their part to pass them. But it's the 50,000-plus people at least that are watching this in any given moment and then it's rebroadcast this evening, it's the folks up there, out there in their homes who really need to, to consider voting for both measures, R and 55. For us to be able to continue the momentum, as we know, those of us who grew up in Los Angeles, there wasn't a comprehensive high school completed in the city since I was born here in 1971. In places like Hollywood, which has just seen population explosions happen, you haven't seen a high school built there in 70 years. Now that's happening. In my own district, nine school projects are underway. It's almost a cliche in my office, every week, there's another ribbon cutting or groundbreaking and that's an amazing, amazing thing. We also know that in order to not fall into the trap that we have done, that we're not just building schools, we have to build the capacity to give teachers and administrators the resources they need to staff those schools. We passed, for instance, a police bond here for facilities a few years ago. We don't want to open up those police stations without police officers. Similarly, this is not the final step for anybody out there. If we are going to ride this through and we have shown a great commitment in this city and this region to our schools, we have to take this step for the physical infrastructure, but then we have to figure out a way to make sure that human infrastructure can fill those classrooms, can fill those buildings, and that we can attract the best talent to continue teaching our young people. So I hope that this will be a unanimous vote today. I think that all of, this is a citywide issue more than a district-specific one, that if we want to make sure we have a healthy economy in this city, this is the first place we have to start. And I applaud the school district for their progress. I applaud you for letting us be your partners. We will hold you accountable, you hold us accountable, and that makes us all stronger. Thank you.
Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to be very brief and rise and say thank you to this team. You guys have done a great job. Appreciate the work you're doing in my district and the people in my community are blown away with the changes and the improvements and I'm just looking forward to continued efforts. You've taken this district to a whole new level, Governor, and it's been great having you here. I'm going to be brief because I know we want to get to the vote, but thank you, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Reyes to close.
I just want to take one more opportunity in saying that many times, our citizenry doesn't realize that our connectivity between the school district and city resources are tremendous. We have, for example, Northeast, the Southwest Museum, we have Heritage Square, we have all these facilities. What's connecting the schools with these facilities is a light rail line. When we improve our schools, we improve the opportunity to connect these kinds of infrastructural opportunities. So kids can actually learn about history, the Native American experience, the history of the city of Los Angeles, knowing that they have access to the goal line and to these schools. But these schools won't be able to accommodate, so they get bussed out. So Measure R and 55 gets us to the point where we can keep them in the neighborhoods. So the relevancy of supporting this particular measure is so important, not only because it's a school issue, but those people who don't have children need to understand that if we have more kids attending these facilities, they have a greater potential for receiving if we have more kids attending these facilities, they have a greater potential for receiving more resources from different areas so that they can keep their doors open, like the Southwest Museum, like the Loomis Home, like Heritage Square along the corridor. And this is probably true for most areas in the city where you have this connectivity. The real challenge is getting our principals and our teachers, along with the administrators and the bureaucracy, to see this connectivity within our own city. So it not only applies for those families that have kids, but also applies to those adults that don't have kids, want to maintain these museums open, want to maintain these great civic destinations open, because it talks about leveraging the strength of our population. So I just want to make that point because I think it's critical. It's one of the issues we tend to overlook. It's something we need to focus on, so it's not just about the kids, as important as that is, it's also about the quality of life for everyone in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Colleagues, we're ready for a series of votes here. We have three items we're considering concurrently. Madam Clerk, the first item is item number two, a presentation by LAUSD. I believe we can note and file that presentation without objection. Second is item 25, which is ballot measure R. So let's take separate votes on item 25 and 26.
Mr. President, I want to clarify one fact. For councilmember Smith, my information is that under Measure R in our Phase III, Porter Ranch is one of those areas that we intend to meet with the community and try to address their needs. It is, I'm informed that that is a part of our consideration under Measure R, Phase III. I just wanted to clarify that.
Is that strong enough? This is certainly an issue for the Porter Ranch area. They've been asking for 13 years for a new school, and I don't blame Councilman Smith for, first of all, being upset with, with past actions, and we need better cooperation. But he needs to know, because he, he needs to be accountable to his neighborhood councils and his constituents, and I think we would all support that, that in the next round, Porter Ranch, it should be guaranteed a new school, and we sort of need to hear that.
Let me answer that question. We have a process in which we really honor neighborhoods. Now, we have assigned a certain number of seats. It's in your packet. You'll see in the, in the handout, there is a number of seats that have been dedicated to that district. But one of the things that we are committed to doing is to go to the neighbors, and the neighborhood will help us discern and determine where the priorities are. Now, it's our intention to try to meet the needs of Porter Ranch, but it would, I think, be unwise for, and would violate the process, for me to sit here and preempt what that community will decide. So...
Well, I think that, I think that community has already decided and has, in fact, been asking for it, so...
Well, I just can't, I think, today, say at this meeting what will definitely happen with that. I think it violates the process, but I will say that we really do want to meet the need based upon the, the priority, and we think Porter Ranch has that. We want the community to help us decide that, the community of that district.
Thank you. Let's, colleagues, stick to the parameters of what's exactly before us on the presentation. As I mentioned, without objection, we can note and file that, even though the governor can't give a strong commitment on the Porter Ranch issue, I believe there's a significant gesture there that we should appropriately recognize. So let's take our first vote on item 25, which is a council resolution in support of Measure R on the March ballot. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. And now on item 26, which is a resolution for the city to support the state ballot measure, Proposition 55. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Thank you very much, especially to the school district officials for being with us this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's send those items forthwith, please, item 25 and 26. And colleagues, without objection and respect to councilmember Ludlow's schedule, I'd like to request we take item 14 next. Ms. Miskowski.
Can we, there's been a discussion to continue item 13 till next week, Tuesday. That's a fire department matter. Fire department is alerted, and that is a request per Mr. Zine's office.
Okay. Any objection to continuing item 13? Seeing none. Item 13 is continued to March 2nd, next Tuesday. Coming back to item 14. Item 14, a matter which has had public hearing, a motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearing. Do we have members wishing to be heard on item 14? Members wishing to be heard on item 14? If not, let's open the roll. Roll is open on item 14. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, 2 noes.
Okay, that is approved. Let's send that item forthwith as well, please. And next, we'll take item two from the special meeting agenda. Call special by Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Members, as you know, this coming Tuesday is an important day in, in the state as we deliberate. The voters will go to the polls to address issues facing the state. One in particular is Proposition 56, and I just wanted to rise and ask for an aye vote on this item. I believe, as I'm certain many of you do, that the current structure of the California's budget process is out of sync with the majority of other states around the country. This requirement for a two-thirds vote has continued to hold the legislature in hostage. It has prevented serious acts to be, serious actions to be taken in terms of providing funding for law enforcement and fire services, and I simply wanted to rise and ask for an aye vote. I think it's important for the city of Los Angeles to go on record, doing everything we can to ensure that the public gets the resources and services that we need in order to take care of the 3.9 million people that reside in this city. So colleagues, I simply rise and urge an aye vote on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. Before hearing from other members, we do have a few speaker cards on item number two of the special meeting agenda. Bill Powers, followed by Victor Veric and Dylan George. If you'd all please come forward at this time. They all left? No, from the podium, sir, from the podium.
Okay, I am here, I'm Dylan George, I'm the Los Angeles County Field Director for the No On Proposition 56 campaign. I'm here today on behalf of the California Taxpayers Association, the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, Vic Veric had to leave, and the United Chambers of Commerce of the San Fernando Valley, Bill Powers had to leave. And we are asking you today to consider opposing Proposition 56. The real aim of Proposition 56 is to make it easier for the state legislature to increase taxes. It eliminates the two-thirds vote requirement to pass a tax increase and reduces that to 55%, which would mean that tax increases would no longer require a bipartisan consensus or justification. What, Proposition 56 is a deceptive measure. It pretends to hold the legislators accountable, but what it actually does is it rewards them by just handing them a blank check and a free hand to increase our taxes. In the city of, in the Los Angeles CLA report, it makes it clear that there are conflicts between Proposition 56 and Proposition 58, which calls that if they both pass, Proposition 58 could be held up in court because of language at the end of Proposition 56 that you'll see in the thing I handed out, that calls for the measure receiving more votes to rule, which could declare Proposition, I'm sorry, Proposition 58, and thus Proposition 57 null and void, or at the very least, hold them up in court, which would be a fiscal disaster for the state of California and the city of Los Angeles. Even if we do pass Proposition 56 and make it easier for the legislature to increase taxes, there's no guarantee that any of that money is going to find its way to the city. The state legislature has a very poor track record on this issue. The city council in the past has supported keeping the two-thirds vote requirement and not a simple majority or not a, not lessening the two-thirds requirement for passing tax increases. In April of 1998, they voted to keep the two-thirds requirement for local bond measures, and the latest Public Policy Institute of California poll shows that that position is in line with 73% of California voters who favor keeping the two-thirds vote requirement to pass a tax increase. And so we are here today asking you to join the largest coalition of taxpayers in opposing Proposition 56.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on this item. Returning to council discussion, Mr. Smith.
I'd like to, Mr. Deaton, please just come for, I just have to ask a question. I'm not going to make it too difficult, Ron. I think the gentleman just expressed some concerns that I heard in committee yesterday and were not adequately answered yesterday, and I still have, and that is the issue of 56 trumping 57 and 58, or at least tying it up in court. Have you read this to the point where you believe that is the case, that 56 could either trump and/or cause conflict enough that it would go to court and cause a delay in implementation of 57 and 58?
Well, Prop 56 has, includes a provision that it would trump a, a proposal on the same ballot with comparable issues. There is a comparable issue in the reserve fund and between Prop 58 and 56. We just pointed out that that was a conflict. How it's resolved, the, it could be resolved in court, it could be, depending on how the alleged counsel and the attorney general view it, it could conceivably done by alleged counsel in the Constitution, but it is unclear how it would be resolved.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but if 57, 58, and from the city point of view, not your personal point of view, but from the city point of view, 57 and 58 are critical to the state budget and critical to the funding cycle on VLF, and we could lose up to 232 million more if 57, 58 don't pass, is that correct?
I believe for the stability of the state finances, 57 and 58 are incredibly important, and stability of the state financing for the city of Los Angeles is equally important because of its repercussions.
And I wanted that on the record, but I think we're all on concurrence on 57, 58. But on this one, my concern is that the potential that if 57, 58 pass, that if 56 passes and get a greater vote, it could really throw a monkey wrench in the entire funding of the state of California, to a point that our funding at the local level is impacted heavily, just as we're beginning our budget process. And that's not something I think any of us want to deal with. I think there's too much of a risk on 56 for us to take. I know the partisan will at this council has been a little more evident lately, but I think we should just put that aside and look at the potential for disaster that 56 could create, not on those other issues, which I think are appropriate, but on the funding of 57 and 58, that it could either trump it or force it into court in a timely way that would destroy the ability of the state to meet its obligations in May, June, when they will run out of money. And if they cannot get that bond fast or have assurance of the bond, that the state's credit rating will tumble, their ability to borrow will tumble, and more importantly, that they won't have the funds they need in May to pay their obligations, and that means excessive trouble for us here in LA. And so I just want to point that out to the council. I know nobody's listening, but it has to be said, that has to be on the record, this could, in fact, cause serious harm to the state's budget processes on 57 and 58, something none of us can afford to have happen.
Listening, Mr. Smith. Mr. Vieragosa.
Mr. President, members, after six years of working in the legislature and trying to come up with some of the solutions to the challenges of gridlock in Sacramento, I can tell you that there are few structural changes that we could make than to provide for a lowering of the threshold from two-thirds to 55% to pass a budget. Follow me now, members. Forty-six states, forty-six states can pass a budget with a majority vote. The United States Congress can pass a budget with a majority vote. We are moving from a two-thirds to 55%. Why? Not because this, there's partisan designs here, because this would work for a Democratic or Republican majority. We're doing it because we know that every year that we open up the paper around July 1st, this state has been unable to pass a budget. I'm proud of the fact that I passed a budget twice, two times, on time, on budget. But we had money then. A lot easier to do that. When you don't have money, that's when you have a problem. Every year, vendors, cities, counties are waiting for the people, for the legislature, rather, to pass a budget. Every year, we're waiting beyond that legislative deadline. I would submit to you that a part of the problem is term limits, but this happened long before term limits. I would submit to you that most of the problem has to do with the two-thirds threshold that's made it almost impossible. You get held up by a small group of people. Let me share with you that that, that small group of people could be on the left or the right. They could be Republican or Democrat. What happens here in a budget is you can get a small number of people to basically say, "Look, I'm holding you up until we give back. Cut the car tax." That's what happened in 98, when Mr. Cardenas and I, I actually with Mr. Burton, cut that car tax. When we did that, they said, "Well, just do it temporarily during good times." We weren't able to turn it around in the way that we would have liked because of this two-thirds threshold. This is an important, I think, measure that all of us here have to support, not because we're partisan, but because we're about good government. And if it's good enough for the Congress, if it's good enough for 46 states, if it can fix the dysfunctional way that we pass budgets in Sacramento, that impact cities and counties, that impact fire and local police, we've got to do it. I would urge your aye vote.
Mr. Cardenas.
You're absolutely right, Mr. Vieragosa. When you're in the state legislature and you require 54 votes out of the state assembly, you require 27 votes out of the state senate. I remember when I was the budget chairman, in the last few weeks, and actually the most important crucial time of the budget process, we ended up talking to three, four, five, six people about the state of the entire state and what they thought about the budget, right or wrong. They got to bring to the table their minority opinion. They got to bring to the table their opinion about how they thought the budget should be, because without their votes, one at a time, we couldn't pass the entire budget. We couldn't do the things that Californians expect the state of California to do. The state of California feeds seniors. The state of California is in charge of Medi-Cal. The state of California is the overseer of health care that is in disarray in the state of California. And some of that budget is supposed to be to address those very important issues. But when I was the budget chairman, I found myself talking to individual members about a park, or a swimming pool, or a building to be named after them. Drove me crazy. And I had in my mind, "We need to talk about health care. We need to talk about senior care. We need to talk about those things." And they didn't want to talk about it. But I had to sit there and endure that mindset because we needed their vote. With a 55%, we will have less of that. With a 55%, we will have more bipartisan participation. With 55%, we will have more budgets passed on time. With 55%, we won't have a perfect system, but certainly, this measure is going to help us as a state of California make sure that we, the city of Los Angeles, can function better, to make sure that the city of Los Angeles doesn't have to wait an extra six or weeks or two months to receive the money that we need to use for our own senior programs, for our own after-school programs, for our own officers who keep the streets safe. This measure is very important. Believe me, when you have a two-thirds vote, I've seen it happen. When you have a two-thirds vote, I had to be the one to negotiate with those individuals. When you have a two-thirds vote, you get off track, and the seniors all too often, and the children all too often, and the people who need California to be responsible are not in the room by the person on the other side of the table, holding up the entire process. Very simply put, this is something that needs to happen. This is good for California, and let's not talk about it in theoretical terms. This is good for you, sitting on the couch right now. If you're on Medi-Cal, it's good for you. If you have children in schools, it's good for you. If you want the economy to be better and things to flow smoother, it's good for you as an individual.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. When we went to Sacramento, we were able to understand some of the machinations that occurs up in... some of the machinations that occurs up in that particular part of the world, which indeed in and of itself is its own world. But to hear from our colleagues, who are from that whole process, and to hear the complications. Colleagues, when we spent hours here, listening to the childcare providers, listening to the healthcare workers, listening to folks who were fighting for those nickels and dimes so that they can be a handy worker for those seniors who don't have the capacity or the monetary ability to fix their own homes, just to keep it warm, this is where this kind of decision makes a difference. We talk about the relevance of what do those politicians have to do with us here at home. It's about that level of impact for our communities throughout the city. So I just want to bring it home. I want to bring it home, what this machination means when you can't get to that majority vote. It has a lot to do with how we, as a city, are going to be able to respond to those cutbacks. They are going to happen. Just the other day, I heard from the CIO that we're up to about $55, $57 million in debt as a city. So where are we going to cut back? Those are the hard questions being dealt with in budget and finance. Those are the hard questions being dealt with in community economic development and housing committee. These are the hard questions that we need to recognize. But let's start talking about the light at the end of the tunnel. Where does it begin? It begins by being able to get to a budget, and to go along with what is done conventionally throughout the country, if not throughout the world, a majority vote, as articulated by Councilmember Villarosa. And we heard from Councilman Cardenas, that sometimes we get stuck in a ridiculous loop because we can't get to the majority vote. So I hope we put into perspective what this means for our children, for our seniors, and for those neighborhood needs that are truly in jeopardy. We need to vote for this measure. Thank you very much.
Mr. Smith.
That was very fast. I just wanted to reiterate, I agree with everything you're saying on here. The importance of this is monumental. But the very fact that if 56 delays the whole process, or it puts it at jeopardy, is a very reason not to support it, because it does the very thing you don't want it to do, and causes chaos in the legislature right now. I just wanted to add one thing. Mr. Powers was here earlier, had to leave. He asked me to enter into the record that the United Chamber of Commerce and Department of Valley voted unanimously to oppose this, and so I'm entering the record. Thank you, Mr. President.
Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none. Let's proceed with the vote.
Mr. President, a motion is required, and as much as the committee is sending this without recommendation.
Ms. Sikowski.
Committee did vote yesterday, two to one, to recommend it, but that wasn't a majority, so I will move the recommendation of the two members to support this.
Okay. Let's open the roll on the motion to support, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, one no.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. And that concludes the special meeting agenda. Let's adjourn special meeting again, and return to the next item on the regular meeting. Actually, we have an item, I believe it's item 18, to be taken up next. Mr. Weiss. Item three, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Labonge, wherever you are. Where are you, Mr. Labonge?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Colleagues, in a few moments, we're going to vote on a new matter, which I'm very proud of, which will provide all workers in the city with 40 hours of paid leave if they happen to be selected to be in a position to donate bone marrow to an individual who's dying, who desperately needs a bone marrow transplant from them. And we won't be the first city in the nation to do this, but we will be one of the first, and we will take a real leadership position here, hopefully in the nation and in the city, and try to catalyze other governmental entities and other companies, other businesses, to provide the same sort of benefit for their employees. I want to tell you in a few minutes a little bit about why I know something about this. But first, there are a number of people here who are very committed to this issue, who I think it would benefit all of us to hear from. Mr. President, I'd like to ask whether we do it by way of holding my time or opening a public hearing. I don't really care. I have about one, two, three, four, or five people that are here today, and I'd like to have them make presentations.
Okay. Is there any objection, members, to reopening the public hearing on this? The two-speaker cards, and they may be folks on your list, Mr. Weiss. I have cards from Anissa Ayala and Raul Gonzalez, both from the American Red Cross.
What we're going to do, thank you, we'll appreciate the reopening of the public hearing, is we'll hear first from Pamela Hammer, then, thank you, Garn, I appreciate that, then Raul Gonzalez and Anissa Ayala from the Red Cross. Then we're going to hear from representatives from the Fire Department and from the Police Department. Mrs. Hammer, we really, all of us are close with your husband Rusty. It means a great deal to me that you're here this morning. We really very much appreciate your joining us. Could you put her microphone on, please?
Go ahead.
Hello. Good morning, members of the council. Mr. President, it's a great opportunity for us to be here today, us meaning I'm representing our family. My daughter was here earlier, but she had to go. The other day, I delivered a gracious certificate of good health and speedy recovery to Rusty that you recommended, and it's now on his wall with many cards, and wishing him very much success in this fight against leukemia. Our story started with Rusty's diagnosis in August of last year. Rusty has been hospitalized since then, with a few weeks off in between chemotherapy. It has been a long and emotional journey, but we have hope, because we have a wonderful bone marrow donor that has given Rusty a gift of life. I call these donors heroes, and Councilmember Jack Weiss is one of these unsung heroes, that has not only donated, but helped sustain someone's life, but now has used his experience to possibly help others that work for the city to donate and to have some paid leave. Thank you, Councilman Weiss. We have had seven bone marrow drives in support of Rusty, and currently, four people from those drives are helping other people. Two from Los Angeles, one of those is Hispanic background. He went in for Rusty, went down, donated. Within two weeks, he was called, and he's saving a young Hispanic boy's life. The reason I mention this is minorities are not represented, and we really need to get out the message, educate the public that we need more people to be on the bone marrow registry. So Rusty and I will be doing this, guaranteed. Rusty's donor is a 42-year-old man, lives somewhere in the United States. We will not meet him. We've sent a letter to him via the nursing staff. But he's a wonderful person, and he will be part of our family. Rusty was very blessed to receive this donor. A lot of people don't. He met a recent man in the hospital that became a friend, and we all celebrated Thanksgiving in the hospital with all of our family. It was a wonderful experience, but unfortunately, this gentleman has passed away. He waited eight months for a donor, and by that time, it was too late. So there's an urgent need for this. Thankfully, Rusty is slowly recovering. He is alive today because of this donation, and we are now going to celebrate his original birthday of May 12th, but now his new birthday of January 22nd. I wanted to thank you for him, for being progressive, for being honorable with your kindness, and for dedicating yourselves to the City of Los Angeles. I think this is a fabulous idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hammer, Raul Gonzalez, and Anissa Ayala from the Red Cross in the marrow program.
Good morning, Council. First of all, I want to introduce myself. My name is Raul Gonzalez. I want to share a little bit about my story. Five years ago, I was diagnosed with a fatal blood disease, which is leukemia. I had no idea what leukemia was. I mean, I heard about it with the Rockaroo story and the Anissa Ayala story, just briefly, but I guess a lot of times, when it doesn't affect our own family and it doesn't affect us, we just kind of, it's easier for us to ignore the situation than say, "How can I get involved in?" That was the last time I heard about it, which was about eight years ago. And you always feel bad when you hear cases like this. Five years ago, I was diagnosed with leukemia, and had no idea. I was a city employee. I was a construction worker for the city of Whittier. Had no idea what leukemia was. I thought, when the doctor told me, "You know, I have to talk to you. I really got something really important to tell you." And he told me that he thought I had leukemia. I said, "Okay, well, how do you cure it? Do I take a pill?" He says, "It's not that easy. You have to find a match." And I says, "What do you mean?" And he says, "Well, you have to find someone that's a match." And he basically told me that the chances of me finding a match were very slim. I had a better chance of winning the lottery than I did of actually finding a match, because of my ethnic background. Being Hispanic, he told me the minorities don't register. There's not many people on the registry. Right now, as I speak, I then took an initiative to do bone marrow drives in my city and in the community. I turned to the American Red Cross National Marrow Donor Program, which helped me do a bunch of drives. I did about seven drives that I could recall, and nobody was a match for me, myself, out of my drives. After being diagnosed in 1999, eight months later, I found a perfect match, a 43-year-old male out of St. Louis, Missouri, which now is my father, my brother, and my best friend. I am now four years post-transplant. I now currently happy to say that I now work for the American Red Cross National Marrow Donor Program. I now recruit donors, people like yourselves. I add them onto the registry. I had the pleasure of meeting Councilman Jack Weiss a couple of months ago, and just to see him and to see that he actually went through the procedure and actually donated was very, very enticing to me, very happy. I was very honored to meet someone like him and my donor. And, you know, a lot of times, we ask, "Well, why would you donate for a total stranger?" And one of their answers to me is always, "Because if it was one of my own family members, I would want someone like yourself to donate for them." I also have the pleasure of, like I said, working with people like yourselves, recruiting them. One of the big questions that I get is, "Well, am I going to get paid if I have to miss time?" They're very scared of missing time, because, I mean, we all have kids, and our kids get sick, we get sick, and they don't want to take their vacation time, their sick leave time. And I think this is very great, this law that's going to hopefully go into effect. I want to thank Councilman Jack Weiss, and I now want to introduce Anissa Ayala, that will show the program a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's truly an honor and a privilege to be here with you today. I, like Raul, is also a marrow transplant recipient. I received a marrow transplant 13 years ago. I was diagnosed in 1988 with leukemia. My only hope of survival was a bone marrow transplant. Unfortunately, with my case, the registry was created in 86, started recruiting in 87, so with the chances of me looking for a match and finding a match, there are only 17,000 people on the registry. I searched the registry. There was not a match on there for myself, so therefore, we continue to do what families do, is go out and recruit. We did, after a year into my search, find one donor, who was a perfect match. That donor was then located and declined to move forward, for whatever reason, they declined. So our family was back in the same boat that we were in, to look for a donor, go on our crusade. And to me, the most important people that we work with is the patients that we work with. Today, I really, after about three years of searching for a donor, my parents conceived another child, and that child was a perfect match for me. Thankfully, I'm still here in front of you today. The odds of me surviving were less than 7%. So it's truly a miracle, this program and what we do. But today, I work with the American Red Cross as the Assistant Director of the Marrow Program, and it's really, truly, an honor and a privilege to work with the people that we work with, to work with donors that truly give of themselves and are so amazing in what gift they give to patients and to families. And if in any way, we, as recruiters, go into the community every single day, recruiting people, talking to community service organizations, holding different campaigns with law enforcement throughout the city, and it's just so important, if there's any barriers that we can remove to donors, to make their decision easier, to say, "Yes, I would like to move forward with this," it really would be so helpful to the patients, to the families, because the end result is getting a patient to transplant as quickly as possible. So I'd really like to say, Councilman Weiss, thank you so much, and thank you to all of you for allowing us to be here today. And on behalf of the families, myself, we just truly want to say we really appreciate this. Thank you.
Mr. President, we have some folks from the Fire Department. I don't know who wants to, which of you wants to come up and say anything, whoever. Please introduce yourselves.
Councilman Weiss and council members, thank you for this time. My name is Matt Monroy. I'm a captain with the Fire Department. This is our union president, Pat McCosker, and this is apparatus operator Gus Perez. The reason why we're here today is, damn, I knew I was going to do this. Ayo Gus Perez has been a member of this department for 14 years, and he's been assigned to Fire Station 38 in Wilmington for about a year now, or a half year. In June of 2003, Gus--
Mike.
In June of 2003, Gus was diagnosed with chronic myeloid leukemia. In order for Gus to live a long and healthy life, he must have a bone marrow transplant in the near future. The Los Angeles Fire Department, along with the City of Hope, is sponsoring six drives. This is blood drives and bone marrow donorship at three locations throughout the city. Two sites are at Fire Station 112 in the city of San Pedro. Two sites are at Frank Hodgkin's Memorial Training Center, which is our training facility, by Dodger Stadium. And two drives are at Fire Station 88 in Sherman Oaks. Just some quick facts to touch on some of the things that were mentioned earlier. There's approximately 5 million people in the National Bone Marrow Donorship Program. The makeup is approximately 80% Caucasian, 20% make up their minority groups, with about 2% being Asian. The procedures for testing, it's very simple. You take a vial of blood, it's sent to a lab, and if that blood is found to be a perfect match for someone in need, then there's two ways to donate. One is peripherally, which is like a dialysis. The other way is, it's a little more invasive, which we all are familiar with, which is going in the hip and receiving it through a syringe. The recovery time for this is four to seven days if you are found to be a perfect match. And the procedure to donate is dictated by the recipient's doctor. Currently, the New York City Fire Department and San Bernardino Fire Department allow their members 48 hours of paid leave. And then, on a personal note, as firefighters, we're in the business of saving lives, and this is an opportunity for all city employees to feel that same gratification as we do and save the life of my friend, my colleague. And I ask you, and I thank you for this opportunity, and thank you.
Mr. President, members of the council, I just wanted to come up and say thank you in advance. I want to start by thanking Councilman Weiss for what he's already done on this. I want to thank the members of the Personnel Committee for their work on this and the recommendation that they've made to all of you. And I think I want to thank you in advance for what I know you're about to do. It says a lot to rank-and-file firefighters that you'd be doing this for all city employees and for us. It says that the boss does care. The boss cares enough still, even in these tough times, that you're willing to make a sacrifice like this, and to offer time off for people that are willing to help somebody like Brother Gus here. So I hope that I'm the donor for Gus. I hope one of us is, but this is the right thing, and we thank you for what you've done for us.
I won't take too much more of your time. I think everything that needs to be said has pretty much been said by now. I often refer to myself as a fortunate person in an unfortunate situation. I'm fortunate and thankful for a lot of things, and some of which are to have been diagnosed in an early stage of the disease, to have a really good response to the current treatment protocol, and mainly to have the support of Captain Monroy, the Fire Department, and you, City-- you, City Council. This is a very important issue, means a lot to myself, my family, and thousands of others that are kind of in the standby mode right now. So I'll leave it at that. I appreciate, once again, your time, your concern, and your support on this issue. Thank you very much.
Lieutenant Johnson from the Police Department.
Mr. President, council members, I'll just be very brief. In 2000, you know, the LAPD joined with Anissa Yala, the Red Cross, in continuing our quest to find marrow donors for the marrow donor program. As you know, back in '96, one of our own, Officer Diana Lonzo, also was stricken with leukemia, and fortunately, we found a match for her. We continue to this day throughout the state with police and fire and the public at large to find donors for people that we don't know. To date, our efforts that we know of have at least 15 donors and have brought in at least over 5,000 peoples into the registry. So we are saving lives, but more importantly, those people need the support from their employers. The city has an opportunity, obviously, to continue in the leadership role, to grant this ordinance. And I would just like to thank Councilman Weiss for his leadership for this ordinance. Thank you.
I want to thank all of the speakers who came today. And I do want to thank you all in advance for voting to support this measure. I just want you to know that I had a chance to donate because it's something I learned in my workplace. I'm going to make this story short. A colleague of mine in the Attorney's Office had a daughter who's, had a classmate who needed a transplant, and she sent email around. We all went to Cedars and got tested, and I wasn't a match for that girl. And I, you know, I frankly forgot about it. I didn't, I went, I got tested, and that was it, and I went on with my life. And I'd completely forgotten that I'd even been tested. Turns out, I learned later that the girl was the daughter of people that I knew, and the girl died. I don't think a match was found for that girl. But I was placed on the registry just completely fortuitously through what happened at my workplace. And when I got the call last summer and went through the procedures and the tests, I was very excited and very hopeful that I would have a chance to save someone's life and to participate. And I did get selected, and I did go through the procedure, and I donated. And I even wrote a note to the parents of this girl that I, that told them that I wanted to explain that it somehow was a result of what happened to their daughter, that at least someone's life somewhere around the world, my recipient happened to live in Canada, would have been saved. And I was really hoping I'd be able to tell all of you that today, but I unfortunately learned a few weeks ago that my recipient didn't make it and made it for about a year or so. So it's a very emotional thing, as you can see, meeting donors and recipients and people whose family members are still in the hospital. The estimate that we've received is that there could be from nine to 25 city workers every year, conceivably, if enough people get on the registry, who conceivably could qualify. And I know you're all going to vote for this. I do appreciate it. But I hope we don't just vote for it. I hope if you've never been tested, if you take the opportunity. It's not like giving blood. You need to, it's not like giving blood, because giving blood, you're there, you lie down, they take your blood, you're done. When you donate for the registry, you need to say right then and there that you're willing to go through with it. You heard earlier on, what, I can't imagine what it's like to be in need of a transplant and learn there's a match on the computer and then have that person decide, "Well, I can't go through with it." Perhaps there are people who decide they can't go through with it because they need to put food on the table for their family and pay their mortgage. And there are plenty of people who work for this city, who live paycheck by paycheck, month by month. At least those folks, thanks to what we're going to do today, will have the assurance that they will suffer no financial penalty for becoming a donor. So I appreciate your eye vote on this.
Mr. Garcetti.
I'll be very brief. I just, I wanted to say something. I want to thank everybody who's here. I want to thank the Hammer family as well for all of their courage and their leadership at a time when it's tough to lead, let alone deal. And I'd just really rise to thank my colleague, Jack Weiss. I never knew the end of the story, but I knew for quite some time, and Jack never talked about it, and he never publicized it. And now, as he talks about it, he is only doing it to promote and to share with others how important this is. But it, when I heard that Jack had become a donor, that there had been a match, it was an amazing act of foresight that he registered, one that everybody in this city needs to do, but also of courage, and I just wanted to recognize that. And the many acts of heroism, which pale in comparison to what families go through when they deal with these. And I know all of, each one of us has been touched by diseases like this and cancer specifically, but our ability to make an impact, we forget sometimes around this horseshoe that we're not just elected officials, we're people. And Jack Weiss, I thank you for what you do.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. I too want to just really thank you, Jack, for bringing this forward. It's an excellent idea. It's an excellent idea to, that we have the power to do, to actually give city employees time off without any worry to become a donor. And I also want to thank everyone who had the courage to come down here today. You know, we all have the stories in our life. 12 years ago, my best friend, who I went to high school with, 12 years ago, bone marrow transplants were not covered by insurance. And there was a major lawsuit that resulted against HMOs, but she lost her life because her insurance company would not pay for it. And then, by the time her and her husband tried to raise the money, it was too late. Couple of years ago, some of you remember when I adjourned our city council in memory of then my college best friend, who was my high school, was my college roommate, who needed a match and never could find one. And it was interesting, because the odds are sometimes it would be your sibling that could possibly be a match. And she actually had three siblings, and none of them were a match. And so till the very end, we all hoped that she would find one, and she didn't. So really, in honor of two of my best friends, what we're doing here today is very important. And thanks, Jack.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you. I just wanted to rise to thank Jack and the other 44,000 city employees of Los Angeles. Thank the captain, who got choked up there, but you never get choked up when there's an alarm, because you're always there for the people of Los Angeles and the apparatus operator and the work that you do, and the head of the Firefighters Union, and the police officer, and the wife of the head of the Chamber of Commerce. And 44,000 employees of Los Angeles now, because of your thought, Jack, are going to make a difference for millions, for millions. So today, at the end of the day, when we go home, or someone says, "Did we make a difference today?", we made a difference because of your leadership, Jack, on bringing this item forward. And time and time again, employees of Los Angeles make a difference. And I can remember events at the Police Academy, or at Frank Hodgkin's, or in the Valley, at Station 88, where they had some outreach, or a Walk America, whatever the case may be, time and time again, the public employees of Los Angeles stand up to make a difference, which gets other employees involved. And then Hughes Aircraft learns about this, and Disney hears about this, and others hear about this, and they do it. So I just think it's great, Jack, that you came forward with this concept and idea that I'm sure will be repeated in cities throughout the country and make a difference in the life of everyone. And as they say at the American Red Cross, "Give the gift of life." And I think there's nothing better than what you did today, because you give the gift of life on this leadership effort and this matter. Thank you, Jack Weiss, very much.
Mr. Carriganis.
Yeah, I just wanted to point something out to the people of Los Angeles. I did some math. I heard a figure, 5,000 potential donors and 15 matches from the drives that have been done recently in the community. I'm an engineer by training. I just, numbers come my way, and I start working on them. The way I see it, just in this city alone, if we had about, we have over 3 million people in the city, close to 4 million. If we had about 3 million people take that blood test and donate that blood so we can figure out if they're a match, maybe they'll get the call someday, we could actually save 1,000 lives. I think that would be a wonderful thing. I think about when I was a kid. Kids think, "I want to save the world," right? Every kid is that idealistic. We're adults, most of us in this room, and we're not all that idealistic anymore, but when you think of children, "I want to save the world." But the thing is, let's be adults. Let's look at it this way, and let's say, "How about if we save the world one action at a time, one life at a time, 1,000 lives?" For those of you who know this issue and know what that means, can somebody tell us what 1,000 matches would mean for the issue in our community? I mean, would that be possibly maybe double what the matches we get today from a community as large as the City of Los Angeles or a region this big? Would it be triple? Would it be 20% more? All I got to say is, if it takes a lot of work to get 5,000 people to show up and say, "I'm willing to contribute, I'm willing to be part of this," and we get 15 matches, that's 15 lives saved. But can you imagine if everybody just said, "You know what? I want to do this. I want to be a part of this. What's it going to cost me? It's something that if I never get to be whatever other thing, astronaut, or doctor, if I never become that, at least I can say, humbly, I saved a life. I didn't have to be a surgeon. I didn't have to be a police officer. I didn't have to be a firefighter. I can be a councilman. I can be a teacher. I can drive a sanitation truck, and I saved lives." That's what I see in these numbers. That's what I see today. The potential for us to make a gesture, a real gesture. If you work for the City of Los Angeles, we're with you. If you want to save lives, live your dreams. We can do this. I think we should. I'd love to see the county do this. I'd love to see the state do this. I'd love to see the federal government do this. I'd love to see every responsible government say, "This is righteous. This is right." And what more American could be than to encourage every American in this country to say, "We save lives." We do it in many ways around the country, around the world, and this is a way to engage every single person. Thank you, Jack, for making me, helping me realize the potential. And you know what? I'll be honest with you. I haven't registered. I'm going to register. And I'm going to make sure that I take it to the level in my personal life, that I bug people and I evangelize about this. Maybe some people aren't going to like it, but maybe my ratio will be 50 people don't like Tony bugging them, but 10 people show up and register. I'll live with that. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you. Other members wishing to be heard? If not, let's proceed with the vote. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate to vote.
11 ayes.
Okay. Colleagues, this is an ordinance before us, so we'll carry over for a second reading, but don't anticipate any problem in final approval here. Next item, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to have the presentation by the Friends of the Observatory at this time?
Yes, it's time to see some stars. Mr. Labange.
What we have right now is a brief presentation, and I appreciate the council members and their staff's focus on this, from John Mukri, the General Manager of the Department of Recreation and Parks, from Dr. Ed Krupp, who is the Director of the Griffith Observatory, from Joy Picas, former council member, the Honorable Joy Picas, and now President of Friends of the Observatory. And we have a presentation on the update at the Griffith Observatory. Mr. Mukri first, and then Dr. Krupp.
Before we begin, let me just, colleagues, call your attention to the roster. We're at a bear quorum right now, so please, nobody leave. We do have a quorum. Let's try to maintain it.
Dear, could I just add on that? We have a number of closed session items, so people may want to consider making arrangements for lunch being brought in or something, because we're not meeting until, again, next Tuesday, and there's some important executive session items.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Labange. It is my personal pleasure to be here to introduce Dr. Krupp and Camille Lombardo from Photo. What we're going to brief you on today is one of the true icons for the City of Los Angeles. And even today, on a clear day, when the sun is shining, you can see the difference in that, the observatory. The twin spires and the brand-new coppers shine like a beacon. Speaking as a naval officer, when I used to travel around the world, there was two things in L.A. you always saw. You saw Dragnet, and you also saw the City Hall, but you also saw the Martians, and they would be destroying things like the observatory. So it is, it is one of our landmarks. This landmark is going under a complete renovation, and it's going to be beautiful. As part of it, Photo, which is our arm, our arm to get money for the exhibits, is doing a tremendous job, and I think we need to see what is going to happen there. I told them, my definition of completion is when people walk in and they say, "Wow." That's all I want them to do. I want our constituents, our children, to come in and say, "Wow, this is a true landmark." So without further ado, I want to pass over to Dr. Krupp, who is a scientist in his own right. We are privileged to have him in the city. He's been with the city about 30 years now. He's done extensive research to get his doctorate, and he is probably the second mad scientist for the city. We're lucky to have one in General Services at my Standards Lab, but I now have the pleasure to introduce our brand-new mad scientist, Dr. Edward Krupp.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mukri. And I may be mad, but I'm not mad at the city council. I'm delighted to be here, and thank you very much for the opportunity to remind you where Griffith Observatory has been and to showcase where we're going. And the real story is new public programming, new public programming initiatives, and especially the new exhibit program, for which Friends of the Observatory is part of an effective public-private partnership with the City of L.A., is energetically seeking outside funding. Griffith Observatory belongs to the entire city, is visited by everybody, nearly 2 million people a year, and is, of course, a Los Angeles icon known worldwide. I know you all remember Griffith Observatory's distinctive three-dome profile there and recall the monumental Foucault pendulum in the main rotunda. You probably remember the electrifying science exhibits that resided in the museum, really forever, including the Half Million Volt Tesla Call. You watched the stars magically appear in the Planetarium Theater, and you made eye contact with the universe at the Zeiss Refractor Telescope on the roof. In fact, more people have looked through that telescope than any other telescope on the planet. And now, after 67 years of intense public use, Griffith Observatory is closed for construction, now in the middle of work that is on time and on budget to add 35,000 additional square feet of primarily public space, also to restore all historic fabric and to preserve the iconic image of the observatory, and as well to transform the observatory technologically. The programming highlights, of course, include a completely new Planetarium Theater with state-of-the-art fiber-optic star projector that will deliver the most accurate, the most gorgeous, the most awe-inspiring dome full of stars in the world. Also, it'll be supplemented by all dome digital animation, laser video, special effects, the richest in color, the brightest, the sharpest that in fact exist anywhere, all projected on a seamless dome that will give the illusion of being remote, pristine, and luminous. The observatory, because the observatory will be the next star in the cluster of new Los Angeles landmarks, like the Getty, like the Cathedral, like Disney Hall, and so the new Planetarium show and the exhibits, 60 new exhibits to be installed in the historic building and in the new underground expansion, they will be judged on the world stage. And we shall be evaluated by opinion leaders, national, international media, and the public on our content and our programming. And this presentation today is just a glimpse of what is going to be thrilling and transforming the visitors. The new exhibits reflect both our everyday and our most exotic engagements with the sky. The primary objective of the exhibit program is transforming visitors into observers of nature, the sky, the universe, really, just everything. The exhibits spotlight what we observe in the sky, how we observe it, and why it matters. And they prompt us all to reexamine our place in the and they prompt us all to reexamine our place in the cosmos and to help us all feel just a little bit more at home in the universe. The Hall of the Eye, in the east wing of the historic observatory, emphasizes the information the eye extracts from the sky and how we've used instruments to extend our vision. This hall includes a unique exhibit in the rotunda, Observing in California, which shows how the modern universe was actually invented in Southern California and confirms that California is the Alexandria of modern cosmology. The Hall of the Sky, on the west side of the building, emphasizes the behavior and the importance of the two most obvious objects in the sky, the sun and the moon. You can't miss them. And they, that, those set of exhibits ground us in the earth-based sky-watching that provide the very foundation of astronomy. From there, however, it's an all-new story. Visitors descend to the new underground expansion to reach the edge of space, where the observatory's remarkable meteorite collection, cosmic ray detectors, other instruments detail pieces of the sky, the things that fall to Earth from space, the things that we go out and get from space and bring back to Earth and allow us to understand better the solar system and distant stars. The Edge of Space also provides a vista, a vista for the Gunther Depths of space, a huge open hall filled with larger-than-life exhibits that emphasize just how our perspective has changed since that crucial moment when we left the surface of the Earth and began to explore space with orbiting telescopes, robot probes at other planets, and of course, in person, leaving our footprints behind us. We live, live in an era when planets are being turned into landscapes, when other stars are being transformed into solar systems, and in fact, we are becoming citizens of the galaxy. And you can get an idea from this view of what people will experience just from that wall across the, the hall and the depths of space. That wall that looks sort of like a starry field is really the big picture, an actual photograph 150 feet long, 20 feet high, of the sharpest and most detailed images ever obtained of deep space. That huge wall is actually equivalent to the amount of sky that you cover up with your finger when you hold it at arm's length, and of course, there's a lot more sky than that. And yet, that amount of sky is filled with unimaginable and beyond-counting stars and distant, beautiful galaxies. It is both science and art, and because it's porcelain-on enamel, it's as permanent as the observatory. In addition to this astronomical architecture and, and all of the other exhibits, like, for example, Walking on Mars, which is in the center of this view, an exhibit which will simulate for the eye, the ear, and the temperature sensors in our skin what it's like to stand at a dramatic and a breathtaking overlook on the red planet, visitors will also have a chance to encounter a variety of events in the Leonard Nimoy Event Horizon, a second theater designed for much more flexible programming. And the exhibits don't end inside either. An entire solar system is drawn in bronze on the front lawn sidewalks and acts as a resource for teachers and the public of the geography of the universe. And the Transit Corridor, on the west side, is an architecturally monumental instrument, unprecedented in a public setting, that demonstrates daily in real time how the sky works. I obviously can't detail, in the time available this morning, everything that's contained in these exhibits, in the Planetarium, everywhere else in Griffith Observatory, but I can confirm that the observatory will offer experiences that are unprecedented and inspiring, experiences that will prompt tourists to Los Angeles to add an extra day to their time in Southern California, because the observatory will be something no one can afford to miss. It will be a world-renowned facility for science education at the doorstep of the children of Los Angeles. And on reopening, Los Angeles will share with the world an educational facility, a historic and architectural landmark, and of course, an astronomical tourist attraction without peer in the world. Admission will be free, and that attracts and serves visitors as diverse as the faces of our community. We are then thinking cosmically, acting locally, and visible worldwide. On behalf of the Department of Recreation and Parks and Friends of the Observatory, and on behalf of the millions of visitors who will be making a celestial pilgrimage to Griffith Park, thank you for your enthusiasm, for your confidence, and your support.
Dr. Krupp, uh, thank you very much for that presentation. I know, uh, Joy Picas is here, the former council member and also President of the Friends of the Observatory, about the private fundraising arm that has gone a long way. I know Leonard Nimoy, just to name one of many who've contributed greatly to the observatory. Could you give us a very brief report?
Just, just a word to say how wonderful it's been for me to be here today, to see all, speak individually with each of you, and to see many, many longtime friends. Uh, I, the council chamber itself has changed substantially, but as I sat and listened, I realized that some things never change. But it has been a real treat for me to be here today. Camille is the person with the most updated numbers in terms of where we stand financially. We are eternally grateful for the wonderful moral and financial support that we receive from the City of Los Angeles. We're proud that we are a city institution.
Camille Lombardo for a brief presentation.
Um, thank you very much, Mr. Labange and council members. Friends of the Observatory is truly pleased with the effectiveness of our public-private partnership and how we've been able to work together. To date, we have contributed $4 million to the construction. Part of the project, we're committed to purchasing another 13 and a half million dollars' worth of very specialized technical equipment to go into the Planetarium Theater, so it is indeed the most incredible, most pristine, uh, theater of its type in the world. All of this money is being raised privately and aggressively, and we are now working on the last $8 million for, to fund the beautiful new exhibit program that Dr. Krupp described to you, and that we will, um, Friends of the Observatory will do the contracting and insta, installation, and then, again, give as a gift to the citizens of Los Angeles, and we're pleased to be an active partner. Right now, it is, again, an aggressive $8 million campaign. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I appreciate all the support, uh, from the mayor, uh, from the city council, uh, for this great building. There's, there's five great, real great public buildings in the City of Los Angeles. The City Hall is one of them, the Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum is one of them, the library is one of them, uh, a, the quasi-public-private, but Union Station is one of them. And, but the hood ornament, if I could borrow Dr. Krupp's term, is the Griffith Observatory that sits on Mount Hollywood and overlooks the city and greets millions and millions of people. And Ms. Hahn, you'll be pleased that the, uh, observatory is working closely with the neighborhoods, uh, the neighborhood councils and associations on all issues related to that, uh, on that. I just want to thank John Mukri for his leadership in taking right off, uh, Dr. Krupp, uh, Joy, and also Camille, thank you. Anything else that we need to add to this?
There's, there's two things I want to add. At Disney's New Adventure, they have a mural that depicts Los Angeles in the year 2450, and one of the key components of that is the Griffith Observatory. The other thing I want to do is, I, I, they were here earlier, George Steigel, Assistant General Manager, he's going to be my right-hand arm on that. I have two members from the Bureau of Engineering, Neil Drucker and Larry Gonzalez.
Yeah, and when you guys stand up and come forward, members, I want you to see Neil, as you know, and George, but also Larry Gonzalez. Larry, get up here, get some applause. They're the project managers, uh, that's, the proj, the project is on time as, to date and under budget, but we need a little more budget. That's correct.
It just shows a collaboration between departments that, the new, this is a new collaboration. We're working together to a common goal, and that's to make this the best the city can ever have.
Well, I thank you, John, and I think Mayor Hahn selected the great one to head this department now, of working with other departments to make things happen. I also want to call out Ron Deaton, uh, who, uh, Ron, I thank you for your help for the observatory, and also thank your wife, because I think it was the first date you had from Long Beach Poly, you took her to the observatory and showed her the city lights, and you'll always remember that. Mr. President, I thank you very much, uh, for, uh, for allowing this presentation to keep the public, uh, informed, and as you know, as is said for the pictures, the copper now is coming on the dome, so it's really interesting to see from all, uh, areas of the city, the restoration work, uh, and we've had no injuries to speak of, of any of the workers, so the leadership of contract ad, uh, to make sure safety is paramount one there.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. I feel like I've had 50 first dates at the observatory, none of them ever worked out. You know, I just want to say quickly, uh, we, we love the observatory. It is, it's clearly one of the jewels in our city, and thank you all for the work you're doing on it. It really is something that we can all point to. It's known through, not only throughout the world, but throughout the universe. But you know who's the biggest champion and really one of the greatest supporters, and this observatory is lucky to have him, and that's Councilman Tom Labange. I've seen a lot of, uh, yes. And, uh, you know, we all do things in life to, when we're involved in projects and to get money. I must say, though, and you know, Tom is Tom, but I must say, I, on this one, I even cringe. There we all were, uh, at the opening of the cathedral. I don't know if you all remember that. Uh, very, very solemn occasion, we were all sitting up front, so everyone could see us. Uh, the governor at that time was Gray Davis, uh, was there with his wife. Gray Davis left before the ceremony was over and was trying to sneak out a side door. Tom Labange leapt over, I think, several pews, uh, and chased the governor, uh, out the side door of the cathedral to, uh, beg for money for the Griffith Observatory. So it was a fine example of never miss an opportunity to, and we got the money, and we got the money. So thank you, Tom Labange, for showing us how to do it.
Thank you very much.
And not once dropped the pumpkin bread. Other members wishing to be heard?
Say publicly, thank Gray Davis for his leadership. I ran into the governor, uh, recently and thanked him for that. At the same time, there was Arnold Schwarzenegger, our new governor, I thanked him, and he has shot many times at the observatory, and he's interested too, to help bring this home as a, as a actor, as an actor, as an actor, but I thank you. And I, I did do that, I did have three Hail Marys and, three Hail Marys and, and, uh, four All-Fathers for confession for, uh, leaving the, yeah, as the Cardinal was speaking, but we got it, so.
Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Uh, actually, this is just a presentation, so we can note and file this, uh, item. Keep up the great work, keep us posted. And, uh, let's proceed to the next item.
Uh, next item is item number nine, and that was called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn, item nine.
Great, well, we're going to, we need to move this agenda along, but I want to take this opportunity to tell you that it's a great opportunity in my district. It's a 10-acre site, uh, which is laid vacant for a while. Today, what we're going to do is, uh, give, uh, the CDD the ability to go out with an RFQ, uh, for qualified developers, and then subsequently do an RFP to pick a great candidate. Uh, this is a site in Watts, and this 10 acres has the potential, um, to really revitalize that community with jobs. Uh, the RFP calls for a minimum of 130 new living wage jobs, uh, for this community. I think that is so important, and I'll tell you, when, when I go to Watts and when I talk to the neighborhood councils, everything we do, they say, "Ms. Hahn, we need jobs. We need jobs in this community to really make things different." This is the potential for that, and this, uh, there's already a, uh, an agreement between the, the future developer, whoever that might be, we are making it clear that they work with neighborhood councils on, um, you know, everything that's going to be involved with that project. We've got the Maxine Waters Employment Preparation Center, which is right next door, which is actually going to maybe, uh, work on their curriculum, um, to, uh, help, uh, maybe train people for the kinds of jobs that the Lands' Site will offer them. Across the street, uh, with the Watts Labor Community Action Committee is the Work Source Center, uh, and both of these agencies will be bidders, um, will be at the Bidders Conference to make presentations to developers on what is possible in the community of Watts for them to work together on. Um, it's in, it's in various incentive zones, so this is just a great project for my district, and I know you're going to support this, but I, I know it's late today, but I wanted to always take the opportunity to talk about something that has this kind of a potential for good jobs in the City of Los Angeles, so thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Other members wishing to be heard? If not, let's open the roll, item number nine. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Congratulations. Next item, please.
Number 18, called special by Councilmember Weiss.
Mr. Weiss. Okay, let's, uh, hold this on the desk.
Uh, item number 27 was called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn.
27.
The base closure list.
Well, talk about jobs, again. Uh, this, um, is, um, a, a resolution that we will be, um, uh, supporting the efforts to keep the Los Angeles Air Force Base from closing. And, again, you know, this happens on a regular basis. Uh, I was very pleased that our new governor, in his, uh, speech, talked about the, uh, real, uh, efforts to keep bases in California from closing. This happens regularly where they get put on the, the BRAC list, but, uh, clearly, um, the L.A. Air Force Base is one of the economic engines in Los Angeles in the South Bay. It employs 5,000 workers, and it manages about $60 billion in military contracts, so it really pumps billions of dollars into our local economy. Uh, some of the contracts are Lockheed, Boeing, Aerospace Corporation, TRW. Um, this is really, um, a, uh, an effort that we all need to join hands on. Uh, cities all over California are joining this effort to keep our bases from closing. So, um, you know, in my district, in San Pedro, we have 645 housing units just for air force personnel, and these 645 families obviously go to our schools, uh, they shop, uh, in some grocery stores, not all of them, and, uh, they, they really contribute to our community. You know, in 1990, we lost the Long Beach Naval Base, which was a severe blow to the harbor-area community, and it was a severe loss of hundreds of families living in San Pedro housing, and a lot of local jobs were lost, so we can't let that happen again. Let's speak with a unified voice to the President, to the Secretary of Defense, to BRAC officials at the Pentagon, that Los Angeles Air Force Base must remain open, and that the Space and Missile Center must not be relocated. Let's join efforts with our governor and members of our congressional delegation, who are also working to keep this space open. I really would love it if we could, again, send a united, unanimous voice to keep the space open. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Aguirre, seconds. Other members?
Good job, Janet.
Seeing none? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved.
Fourth with.
Fourth with on that. Next item, item 29, called special by Mr. Smith.
I, I just want to ask one request, question. I'm, I'm for this, I have no problem with it. My concern is, many years ago, that the council had introduced a motion to create a policy to decide how we go about naming communities, and I've never seen it, and I was just wondering if anybody knows where that is or why we haven't seen it back, it's been years.
I believe it was, uh, Ms. Akowski's motion to begin with, and it's, uh, currently in the Education Neighborhoods Committee.
Okay. Okay, I was just wondering. Thank you, that's all I want to know. Thank you.
Okay. Other discussion or questions on this item? Mr. Labange.
Yeah, in the Toluca Lake area, the neighborhood council approved it, so we are going through a neighborhood process, but you brought up some very good points, Mr. Smith, as always. Thank you.
Anything else on this item? If not, Ms. Hahn.
Yes, I just want to clarify, it's coming back in my, in my committee in April. The problem has been, uh, them putting back together this report that really, uh, talks about all these issues, CAO, CLA, I mean, they've taken a really long time to do this report because they wanted to do it right, so, but it'll be in my committee in April.
Okay. Going once, going twice. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Is, uh, Mr. Weiss back yet? He's in the back of the chamber. Okay. Let's, uh, hold item 18 until after closed session. Uh, Madam Clerk, do we have any other items before going to closed session?
Do you wish to clear the desk? There are excuses.
Let's do housekeeping.
Uh, Council President Pitya requests to be excused Wednesday, March 3rd, to leave at 11:30, and Friday, March 12th, to leave at 12:30 for city, city business, so it's both meet council policy.
Okay, excuse granted.
And number 18 is still on the desk.
Mr. Weiss.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to.
Okay, we're ready for our vote on item 18. Ms. Msakowski.
Fourth with.
14 and 42. Fourth with, please. And, uh, item 18, we're ready to act. Let's open the roll on item 18. Close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, one no.
That is approved. Uh, and if housekeeping is done, colleagues, a balance of the items remaining before us are closed session matters. In conformance with California, a lot of the council will now adjourn into closed session. Sergeants, please clear the chambers. Madam Clerk, next item before us, please.
Settlement in the, uh, in item number 35, and that's in the case of Juliette Musso versus the City of L.A. and Arthur Adolph versus the City of Los Angeles, and that's in the amount of 800 of $875,000.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with, please. Okay. Let's have the record reflect, Mr. Smith, there's no vote on that item. Next item, please.
Item number 36, an S in the case of Placencia versus the city of Los Angeles, in the amount of $250,000.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Fourth with, please. Next item.
Item number 37, settlement in the case of Philip Pondo Adolph versus the city of LA, and that's in the amount of $350,000.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Fourth with. Next item.
Item number 39, settlement in the case of Davis versus the city of Los Angeles, and that's in the amount of $250,000.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Fourth with, please. Next item.
Item number 41, that's in the case of Next Del of California versus the city of Los Angeles, and that's to rescind a council action of August 14, which denied a conditional use permit and refer the matter to Planning, Land, Use and Management Committee, and also to request the city attorney to file and make a brief in a similar case.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, one no.
Fourth with, please.
And that clears the desk, Mr. President.
Okay. Colleagues, that's the end of our agenda today. Do we have any announcements? Mr. Lombard for an announcement.
But you know, Sunday, we had a wonderful tree planting dedication for George Harrison in his memorial tree. And what was interesting, we had about 500 people there in the Observatory parking lot. His wife, Olivia, sent a message, and her message, her son Donnie wanted to thank us because we declared it George Harrison Day in the city of Los Angeles. And it talked about George's music, his love that spread far and wide. She was on her way to New Delhi. And in marking this day, she talked about how George loved this city. And Antonio, he loved Alvera Street. He used to go to dinner on Alvera Street often, and he loved Chinatown, Ed Reyes. And he also knew and loved Griffith Park. He filmed at Union Station, the Wilshire E-Bell, and the courthouse here on Hill Street. Should have told Judge Pragerson. He played at the Hollywood Bowl, the Dodger Stadium, and the Palomino, where I met my wife. He visited friends from Tranqus to Palis Verdes in San Pedro, from the lakes shrine on Sunset Boulevard to Mount Washington, Ed. He walked the Santa Monica Pier and rode bikes in Venice. From 1964, 65 onward, George spent a lot of time in Los Angeles, including his very last days. So for me, says Olivia Harrison, Los Angeles is a city that lives up to its name, is the city of angels. Thank you once again for paying homage to him at this time of year. This is the wife of the late, great George Harrison, Olivia Harrison, read by his sister, her sister that read it for us at the event in the beautiful tree planting. So I wanted to make the remark on Mr. Harrison's, what would have been his 61st birthday, and the appreciation that his wife had for all the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Lombard. Other announcements? Mr. Garcetti.
Can I move reconsideration of special three? Just to be recorded a different vote? Or can we adjourn this to be able to move in that real quick?
What was the, the vote on that? Will there change the vote, change the outcome?
Could Mr. Weiss and I be recorded as no votes?
We'll change the record to reflect you two as no votes.
I was here. I've been here the entire meeting.
I was here, and on special three, which is a council agenda evidently supporting propositions 57 and 58 on the March 2 ballot. I would also like to join Mr. Garcetti and be recorded as a no vote on those council resolutions.
We'll make that change, and that does not change the outcome of the vote. Other announcements? Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. This morning, and I want to thank, I know, Mr. Weiss, Mr. Vieragosa, Mr. Reyes, also, Mr. Cardenas have been very supportive today. CTV at 9:00 AM Pacific Time, 12 o'clock East Coast Time launch is the first English-language Latino channel in the United States. Their facility, which is in Glassell Park, which has already reached out to the community, is great. They have the three shows they're going to be doing live, a music show, a talk show, and what's the third one? I forget. The third one is right now, but there's three different, oh, comedy show, which they're going to be doing live. A lot of tape stuff as well. But right in the heart of Glassell Park, they're going to be reaching out to some of the young people. I'm sure today, a door is opening for Latinos who live right there, who sometimes haven't been part of the production in the television industry, will be able to intern other community members as well, and get good jobs and learn about CTV. So we wish them all the best. Adelphia TV tells us that they're going to be sitting down with CTV, and we look forward to them incorporating CTV, a local channel here, that's being seen nationwide already on Dish and DirecTV, on Comcast and other networks throughout the United States. But it's a proud day for Los Angeles, a great job generator as well, and we wish them all the best of luck, and tune in and check it out, Los Angeles.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Just to add to that, CTV, for my colleagues and those listening, CTV is not just a Spanish station. It's English-speaking that speaks to the cultural elements for those who are second, third, fourth generation Latinos. There's a huge audience out there, more than half the city, and it's great to find, finally, in the media, role models, depictions of life that are beyond the stereotypes of just a gangbanger, or the drug dealer, or the prostitute. These are the depictions that are so negative for Latino community. Finally, we get to see the great richness of our city and the great diversity we have in multiple languages and multiple cultures. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Weiss.
After discussions with our clerk about the manner in which, I guess, a couple items were joined earlier in the agenda, I would just like to formally move reconsideration of item three on the special agenda so we can do a vote that is clean, because it sounded like we were going to be recorded. Mr. Garcetti and I otherwise would be recorded as no on the LA sanitation equipment charge revenue bonds, which we don't want to be against. So if we could move to reconsider.
I'm going to ask that we nod, but this is three, is the, this state, we've now gone down to a bear quorum. I think we should not reconsider it. If we want, we can take it up on Tuesday. But I think there was the, on three, this is on item three.
Tuesday's election day, Ms. Sikowski.
Right. But we had, we had this discussion. We had a debate. We now had at least three members.
I don't think we had a debate because items one and three were voted on together.
No, we had, those items both went through, items one and three went through as content items. People who were here had an opportunity to call these items special. So, Mr., members, members, let me get your attention here.
Make a motion for reconsideration, and let's vote on it.
We're going to have to take a vote here. Mr. Weiss, please. We have a motion for reconsideration. Did we just do somebody?
Open the roll.
Okay. We just lost the quorum.
We did lost, lose the quorum?
So, anything else before we end the meeting?
Well, then I would, I would just ask that I be recorded as no on item one and three, as I did previously. It's better.
Which has already been done. Okay. Any other final announcements? Adjourning tributes? Please rise for adjourning motions. Please rise for adjourning motions. Please rise for adjourning motions.
Clerk.
Ms. Sikowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask the council to adjourn in the memory of a longtime community activist, woman named Juanita Rosenfeld. For those who around this building in the 70s, 80s, and 90s, Nita was very, very well-known as a Hillside Federation fighter. She actually started in the early 60s with Marvin Browdy and created something that was then called the Friends of the Santa Monica Mountain Park. And it was the idea to create a Santa Monica Mountain Park that 40 years later, we have a national park, we have a state park, we have a great, great state park system, not only through the city of LA, but throughout, you know, into two counties. Nita was also, her president of the Mandeville Canyon Association for many years, and a lot of things that we take for granted today in Hillside in terms of appropriate density controls, issues relating density to the slope and the steepness of the land, issues of brush clearance. She was involved here with the fire department on those issues. She lived a long and healthy life, but got to see the culmination and fruition of a lot of her early activities in the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. And she was honored, actually, when we had a dedication of a piece of property known as Eastport or Tucker, that when we had the dedication ceremony, there were Native Americans who blessed the land and blessed Nita in particular for her role in helping to create that. She is survived by her husband, John, who is retired from the UCLA faculty, and a son and daughter.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask, we adjourn colleagues for the passing of Louis Hillary, who actually died in a nursing home in Sacramento, December 1, but was, for over 50 years, a teacher and administrator at Los Angeles City College. Invite the public this Friday for a public memorial that will be held at 2:00 PM Friday in the Camino Theater, 855 North Vermont Avenue, in his memory.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I have two adjourning motions. The first one is for Viva McQuain, Viva Walker McQuain died of natural causes on February 4, 2004 in Los Angeles. She was born on August 4, 1893, in Birmingham, Alabama. At the time, Frederick Douglass was still living and Benjamin Harrison was president. At 110 years old, Mrs. McQuain was among the oldest living Americans. Authorities estimate that only 40 other people throughout the world are her age, or are, were her age, or are her age, or older. When asked about her secret to longevity, Viva simply said, "Just live a good life." After leaving the segregated South for New York, she was introduced to Herman McQuain, a brilliant chemist who had just returned from an assignment in the Aleutian Islands. The couple married just six days after they met. The McQuains had an insatiable appetite for literature and amassed an enormous personal collection, which contains thousands of volumes, including rare photographs and manuscripts. After 49 years of marriage, Herman McQuain passed in the early 1990s. Mrs. McQuain did not have any siblings or children. During her waning years, she cheerfully imparted wisdom to occasional visitors at her nursing home. She originally resided at Angeles Plaza here in the 9th District downtown Los Angeles. Jeffrey Winston at Angeles Plaza remembers the words that Vera gave to his daughter, "Listen to your parents and stay in school." This was great advice from one of the oldest women in our country, who never needed glasses throughout her life, but had seen it all. Funeral services are pending. Councilmember Parks asked me to do this on his behalf. This was in today's obituary, and this was for Carl Anderson, a renowned singer and actor who lived in Los Angeles. He was well-known for his role as Judas in the musical Jesus Christ Superstar. He is survived by his wife Veronica, a son Khalil McGee Anderson, stepdaughters Hannah and Leila, Leila Ali, I guess, Leila Ali, several sisters, and a host of family and friends. His memorial service will be held on Saturday at Agapi International Spiritual Church at 11:00 AM in Culver City.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask the council to adjourn in the name of Adelaide Strocky. She was the mother of Dr. Fred Strocky, who is the president, excuse me, the chairman of the Business School at Cal State University, Northridge, until his retirement. Although he lives in Malibu, he drives back twice a week, once to go to the Northridge Bid, where he's on the board, and a second time to come back to the Northridge, North Valley YMCA, where he's also on the board. Adelaide Strocky.
Other tributes? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.